Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock, so we will get underway. And thank you for joining us this evening for our two public hearings and our council meeting. I want to first recognize this meeting is taking place on the traditional unceded territory of the St. Minus people, and I know that we're all thankful to be here. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening? Ms. Smith? I don't believe Ms. Smith can hear. Oh, can you hear us?
Yes. Late items?
Yeah, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, your worship. There are late submissions for both public hearings. So the first one, if council would receive under item 3.1.3, 670 and 674 Farrell Road and lot 20 Trans-Canada Highway. And then also for item 4.1.3, public hearing regarding 201 and 203 Dogwood Drive. These are all public submissions that were received after publication of the agenda and right up until 4:30 PM today. Any items coming in tonight will read into the record.
Thank you, and those were all distributed to council via email in advance.
Yes.
Thank you for that. And with those additions, if I can ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended, moved by councillor Stevens, second by councillor Johnson, all those in favor. Any opposed? Not opposed, motion carries. I believe that takes us to our main items at the beginning of the agenda this evening. That's our public hearings. So we'll go through them one at a time. Number three is for 670 Farrell Road, 674 Farrell Road and Lot 20 Trans-Canada Highway. The legal descriptions are listed in the agenda packages. And I'll just go through a bit of a process outline for everyone, and then we can get underway. Make sure I've got the right one here. Yep. So there are two public hearings on the agenda this evening. The first is public hearing is bylaws 2060 and 2061. The public hearing is convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act and Ministerial Order M192 to allow the public to make representations to council respecting matters contained in bylaw number 2060 and bylaw number 2061 to allow the construction of a multifamily and single-family residential subdivision with a park at lot 20 Trans-Canada Highway 670 and 674 Farrell Road. Written submissions received prior to the Tuesday agenda deadline are included in the agenda package. Written submissions received after this time have been provided separately to council. Written submissions for bylaws 2060 and 2061 may be received during the public hearing if emailed to info@ladiesmith.ca prior to the close of the public hearing for bylaws 2060 and 2061. Everyone present shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaws. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views known. However, is it important? It is important that remarks be restricted to the matters contained in the proposed bylaws. When you would like to speak, this is a bit of a wrinkle because this is virtual. Please click the raise your hand feature in the webinar controls. And when it is your turn, you'll receive the prompt which will ask you if you would like to be unmuted. Once you accept the prompt, you will be able to make your comments. Your video will remain off. If you have called in by phone only, you need to press star six to raise your hand and star nine to unmute. Once you have finished speaking, you will be muted again. When speaking, please commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. Once everyone has had an opportunity to speak, those who wish to speak again may do so. Members of council may ask questions following presentations. However, the function of council at a public hearing is to listen rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws. Please be advised that public hearing will be recorded in live stream, so your name, address, and any comments you make, in addition to written submissions, will become part of the public hearing record. Following the close of the public hearing, no further submissions or comments from the public can be accepted by members of council. I will now ask staff to introduce the proposed bylaws. Over to you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. So um, for this particular public hearing, the bylaws that are the subject of this hearing are Official Community Plan Bylaw 2003, number 1488, Amendment Bylaw number 632021, number 2060, and Town of Lady Smith zoning bylaw 2014, number 1860, amendment by law number 332021, number 2061. The subject property consists of three adjacent lots located at lot 20 Trans-Canada Highway 670 and 674 Farrell Road, and they are legally described as Lot 20 District Lot 41 Oyster District Plan 2519, except parts in plans 899343958 and EPP 28332, Lot 2 District Lot 41 Oyster District Plan VIP 65993, and Lot 1 District Lot 41 Oyster District Plan 20461. The applicant has applied for a zoning bylaw and an official community plan amendment to facilitate the construction of a mixed multifamily and single-family residential development consisting of 24 single-family or duplex parcels on the south end of the site, and a maximum of 60 multifamily units on the north end of the site. A public park is also proposed for the very south end of the site. If approved, bylaw 2060 will amend the OCP by placing the subject property into three land use designations, parks and open spaces, single-family residential and multifamily residential, and by placing two development permit areas on the proposed multifamily area at the north end of the site, Development Permit Area 7 Hazard Lands and Development Permit Area 4 Multi-Unit Residential. And if approved, bylaw number 2061 will amend the zoning bylaw by placing the subject property into three zones, Low Density Residential R3A, Single Dwelling Residential R1, and Park and Recreation P2. And also, it would allow the R1 zone to be amended on a site-specific basis for the subject property only by allowing duplexes on the proposed single-family area with the following additional regulations. It would require a minimum parcel size of 780 square meters for duplex to be permitted, a minimum finished floor area of 137 square meters for duplexes, and a maximum finished floor area of 390 square meters or 50% of the parcel area, whichever is less for duplexes. And then on to the public hearing notice. The notice of today's public hearing for these bylaws was published in the Lady Smith Schumanus Chronicle on March 25th and April 1st, 2021, and was posted on the town's website. Pursuant to section 466 subsection four of the Local Government Act and section 10 of the Town's Development Procedures Bylaw number 1667, written notice was delivered to the subject property and all neighboring properties located within 60 meters of the subject property. A copy of the proposed bylaws and background information to be considered by council was made available at the front counter of the City Hall and Development Services offices, as well as on the town's website during the notification period. The applicant hosted two neighborhood information meetings, one on June 26, 2019, and one on July 15, 2020. And a total of 25 submissions from the public have been received as part of both the neighborhood information meeting and the public hearing processes. That's it.
Thank you very much. We will now open the floor for public submissions. I'm going to ask the applicants to make the first submission in advance. Want to thank all of those who contributed by letter in advance of the public hearing this evening for their feedback as well. And we'll turn it over to if the proponent wishes to make a submission, and then we'll go to the public submissions. Ms. Smith?
All right, I believe it's Mr. Kelln, and I'll allow him to talk, and Mr. Carroll.
Thank you.
Sorry, just one moment. Okay, Mr. Kelln, if you're ready, you can speak. Hello? Okay. We'll see if Mr. Sean Carroll is available. Oh, there he is. Hello, Mr. Kelln. I think he's having technical difficulties. Mr. Carroll, I'm asking you to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you very much. Mayor Stone Council, my name is Sean Carroll from 8988 Fraserston Court, Burnaby, B.C. I'm here as a representative for this application. I believe I only need to briefly explain the development proposal. Staff has done an excellent job, and there's no need to repeat any information. The site plan as presented today is a result of extensive discussions with the neighborhood, Lady Smith staff, and a couple council meetings. The result is a site fund that includes R3A zoning, which matches the adjacent property, the Gales, single-family zoning R1 and park zoning in the southwest corner of the site. This layout was created through several discussions, engineering submissions and reviews, and adaptation to various reports, including the geotechnical reports, the Arborist report, and the wildfire safety reports. I'd like to confirm a few items before I yield. The development site will use both Sanderson and Farrell Road as its access. The second item is that we are proposing that all construction traffic use Farrell Road to reduce neighborhood impact. And our third item that I'd like to confirm is that the park site was selected by staff to take advantage of the access to the green space to the south. We have also invited Jason Potter, our traffic planner from Bunton Associates at this public hearing, to provide comments or answers regarding this application. At this time, I'd like to offer the virtual floor back to Mayor Stone and make ourselves available later in the hearing to provide additional comment or answers if it is acceptable to Mayor Stone and council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, and thank you for your time. Ms. Smith, are we able to proceed with the public submissions? This will be the first call for public submissions.
Yes, your worship. And just one correction, my apologies. It is star nine to raise your hand if you're on a phone. It doesn't look like anybody's on a phone, but it's start nine to raise if you're on the phone.
Thank you.
Kathy Potts. I'll just ask you to unmute. Thank you.
Hello, this is John Potts. Kathy's sitting right beside me. We live immediately adjacent to the development. So my address is 11060 Trans-Canada Highway. So that Sanderson Road, when it goes through the proposed development, will dead-end on our property. And I would just like to say I'm completely in favor of the development. I'm quite happy with it to go ahead. I'm happy with all the work that's been done. So that's my contribution.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith, is our next participant available?
I will see. I don't see any. I don't see any further hands raised.
Thank you. I'll do a second call for submissions then. If there's any folks that still wish to give input on this hearing, please raise your hand.
We have, we have a couple more. So Wendy Rosen, you.
Please unmute. Hi. Can somebody just comment about the how much of the tree cover will be left and how much will be gone? And if there's a pattern of trees being left and, you know, given that it's a mature forest, once some trees are logged out, will the remaining trees be stable? Just questions around tree cover.
Thank you, Ms. Rosen. During the public hearing segment, we don't actually respond to questions. This is a time to hear from you, but I've written down your question, and we can address it during the further consideration of the bylaw. There is an Arborist report that was included in previous reports, but we can discuss that when council deliberates following the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any further comments before we move on to the next contributor?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, please go ahead.
I don't see any other hands raised at this time.
I was gonna say I won't do another call until we give them a chance. Go ahead.
Yeah, I've got David Garvey. Can I unmute yourself?
Hello, this is Gloria and David Garvey. We live at 626 Farrell Road in Unit 20 in the Gales. We have been to the meeting that was held in June. So we have quite a bit of information. Thank you for that. We would like to express our concern about the 100-year-old forest being removed for this development. We're quite disheartened about that. And since we have lived here in a year, for a year and a half, I'm an avid bird watcher, and I have recorded 69 species of birds in that forest, back and forth between the trees that are in the Gales. But it's a very significant place for birds. There are eagles nests, great horned owl nests on occasion, and many other, you know, birds that will be obviously very much displaced by the removal of those trees. And the other concern that we would have would be with regards to highway noise. I don't, I think it would take a very long time for any trees that would be added in as replacements to come close to helping with highway noise for our home. And yeah, we're feeling quite quite sad about not just the noise, but about especially about the removal of a 100-year-old forest that houses wildlife, and especially birds. I don't know if any consideration was given to birds, but I think it's something that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll wait and see if any other hands raise. I think when we call on a raised hand, it might lower everyone else's hand. But before I do the third call for submissions, I'll see if there's any more hands hanging.
Yes, your worship. I'll ask Bob Mack to join the meeting and just unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Perfect. The information that I saw circulated seemed to indicate there were 45 single-dwelling residential units. I think in your introduction today, you said there were 60. Is this correct, or is it a change?
No, you may have misheard. And again, this isn't a question and answer session, but I will take your feedback, and we can address it during council's deliberations.
Oh, okay. If there were 60, then just to be aware that that would mean there would be a tripling of the vehicle traffic on Sanderson Road. And when I say tripling, there are 30 people living there right now. If there's 60 additional, then that means there will be 90. So it will be a tripling of the vehicular traffic. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
So everyone knows I take mad notes during public hearings. So if you see me looking down, I'm scribbling down what I hear from folks. So any others, Ms. Smith?
No, your worship. I don't see any hands at this moment.
Okay, I'll do a third and final call for public submissions on this public hearing. This is the ones regarding Farrell Road and Lot 20 Transfer Beach, or sorry, Transfer Peach, Lot 20 Trans-Canada Highway. So this is the third and final call for submissions. I don't, oh, Ms. Smith.
Your worship, I just wanted to point out, we did offer the opportunity to people to comment via email during each public hearing.
As soon as I was finished making that submission, I was going to turn to you for the written, any further written ones, but please go ahead.
There are none right at this moment.
Thank you. But yes, to make sure we get the process after I do the third and final call for submissions, I will check with Ms. Smith to see if there any further written comments have been received. And as there are no submissions, the public hearing for bylaws number 2060 and 2061 is now closed. Thank you for, thank you. Oh, sorry, I got a little bit off of my spot. Thank you for the public hearing for bylaw 2060 and 2061 to allow the construction of multifamily and single-family residential subdivision with a park located at Lot 20 Trans-Canada Highway 670 and 674 Farrell Road is now closed. No further input or submissions can be submitted to council, and these bylaws are on tonight's council meeting agenda for further consideration. And I will do my best to ensure we address the questions that were posed during that portion of the meeting. So thank you for that. Moving on, Ms. Smith, I believe that takes us to our next public hearing. And just bring my notes up. The second public hearing tonight is for bylaws 2060 and 2063. At the scheduled start title, reading out the rest of my instructions. This public hearing is convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act and Ministerial Order M192 to allow the public to make representations to council respecting matters contained in bylaw number 2062 and bylaw number 2063 to allow the construction of a 25-unit multifamily residential building at 201 and 203 Dogwood Drive. Written submissions received prior to the Tuesday agenda deadline are included in the agenda package. Written submissions received after this time have been provided separately to council. Written submissions before bylaws 2060 and 2063 may still be received during the public hearing if emailed to info@ladiesmith.ca, info@ladiesmith.ca prior to the close of the public hearing for bylaws 2062 and 2063. Everyone present shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaws. No one will be discouraged from or prevented from making their views known. However, it is important that remarks be restricted to matters contained in the proposed bylaws. When you would like to speak, please click the raise your hand feature in webinar controls, and when it's your turn, you'll receive a prompt which will ask if you would like to be unmuted. Once you accept the prompt, you will be able to make your comments. Your video will remain off. If you have called in by phone, you need to press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. Once you have finished speaking, you will be muted again. When speaking, please commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. Once everyone has had an opportunity to speak, those who wish to speak again may do so. Members of council may ask questions following presentations. However, the function of council at a public hearing is to listen rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws. Please be advised that the public hearing will be recorded in live stream, so your name, address, and any comments you make, in addition to written submissions, will become part of the public hearing record. I will now ask, oh, following the close of the public hearing, no further submissions or comments from the public can be accepted by members of council. Now we'll now ask staff to introduce the proposed bylaws. Ms. Thompson?
Right. So the bylaws that are the subject of this public hearing are Official Community Plan Bylaw 2003, number 1488, Amendment Bylaw number 642021, number 2062, and Town of Lady Smith zoning bylaw 2014, number 1860, Amendment Bylaw number 342021, number 2063. The subject property consists of two adjacent lots located at 201 and 203 Dogwood Drive, legally described as Lot 10 DD 21674N, District Lot 56 Oyster District Plan 1684, and Lot 11 DD 27179N, District Lot 56 Oyster District Plan 1684. The applicant has applied for a zoning bylaw and official community plan amendment to facilitate the construction of a 25-unit multifamily apartment building consisting of a total of six stories, five of which are fully above ground, underground parking, stepping on the fourth and fifth stories, and the potential for small-scale local commercial uses on the ground floor. If approved, bylaw 2062 will amend the OCP by changing the land use designation on the subject property from local commercial to multifamily residential, amending the multifamily residential designation policies to support small-scale commercial uses and allow a density of up to 180 units per hectare through density bonusing or amenity contributions, and adding Development Permit Area 4 Multi-Unit Residential to the property. If approved, bylaw 2063 will amend the zoning bylaw by changing the current zone on the subject property from local commercial C1 to a new zone, multifamily mixed-use R4. The R4 zone would be specific to the subject property at this time and contains regulations that would facilitate the proposal, including allowance of small-scale commercial uses on the ground floor, allow a maximum height of 19 meters, allow a density of 60 units per hectare up to a maximum of 180 units per hectare through the provision of amenities such as underground parking, brownfield redevelopment, energy-efficient building design, and provision for adaptable units. And the bylaw also requires stepping on the fourth and fifth stories. The notice of today's public hearing for these bylaws was published in the Lady Smith Schumanus Chronicle on March 25th and April 1st, 2021, and was posted to the town's website pursuant to section 466 subsection four of the Local Government Act and section 10 of the Town's Development Procedures Bylaw number 1667. Written notice was delivered to the subject property and all neighboring properties located within 60 meters of the subject property. A copy of the proposed bylaws and background information to be considered by council was made available at the front counter at the City Hall and Development Services offices, as well as on the town's website for the duration of the notification period. And the applicant hosted two neighborhood information meetings, one on July 15, 2020, and the other one on July 2019. Sorry, 29, 2020. And 39 submissions from the public have been received as part of both the neighborhood information meeting and the public hearing processes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe that makes us, now we're able to turn for submissions, and we'll ask the applicant if they wish to make a preliminary or initial submission. Ms. Smith?
Yes, your worship. I'm just gonna ask Mr. Frank Crusil to come into the meeting and unmute.
Welcome, Mr. Crusil. If you can hear us, please go ahead.
I think Mr. Crusil has a, again, an older, oh, there, an older version of Zoom. It's not allowing me to just. Can you hear us, Mr. Crusil? Okay, the next, the next person they had requested speak as part of their team was Mr. Brian Kapaczynski. So perhaps he can come in, Mr. Kapaczynski. Thank you.
Thank you. Can, pardon me, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
My name is Brian Kapczynski. I'm at 2122 Shawnaegan or Brandon Road in Shawnaegan Lake. I'm the architect on the project, and I'll briefly go down 10 points that I think are important to the project. We all know it's located on the corner of Dogwood and Forward Road. There are 15 surface parking stalls. The rest of the property is fully landscaped with decorative concrete and pavement. The entrance to the underground is off Forward Road. The building contains twenty four apartments with one commercial unit on the ground floor. The twenty four apartments are predominantly one bedroom with a few two bedrooms, and all units have balconies or roof decks. Levels, level four has a common roof deck open to all residents. And level four and five have private roof decks. Uh, the building has a general modern appearance with flat roof. And as mentioned previously, the building form steps back twice as it goes up. And the exterior finishes of the building are of very high quality, a face brick predominantly, cement board siding and decorative metal trims and sun shades filling out the palette. Thank you. That concludes what I had to say this evening.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Smith, are there any other representatives from the proponents? No, Ms. Smith, you're muted.
I believe Mr. Will Melville. I don't see him on the list here. Oh, here he is.
Mr. Melville, please go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, Mayor Stone, um, council and staff. Um, I think between Julie and Brian, they pretty much covered off, uh, the, the intent of the building here and the general design. Um, I've certainly been helping out here as part of the design team and, uh, I think the only comment that I'd like to add here is that as part of our submission package, we also prepared a study of sightlines and how that impacted the neighborhood. Kind of a tall order to do that, um, and took some creative thinking in terms of how we could effectively address that for people in the neighborhood. So just to give you some insight into how we've done that, we've done two things. One, we selected areas around the neighborhood uh, that are readily identifiable. So for instance, um, intersections essentially. And also with the guidance of planning staff, there were some specific views that they asked us to address. So we've certainly been through the neighborhood a number of times. Um, what we did to help relate the building and its height in particular to the neighborhood was also establish a line through the neighborhood. Uh, more or less runs diagonally uh, through second, third, and fourth avenue. Uh, that contour line equates to the top of the building. And we have picked up, as I said, at identifiable locations, we've done photographic records and inserted some modeling of the building, uh, where the building is actually visible from. Uh, what we discovered is that certainly there are some readily identifiable corridors where the building can be seen. Um, a little bit to my surprise is that as we went through a neighborhood that's pretty well established and of course Ladysmith being on a slope. Uh, and having a fair bit of mature vegetation in the neighborhood, there really aren't a lot of corridors where the, where the building is actually visible. I say that from a public perspective and a street perspective. Uh, we, we can't, of course, go into everybody's backyards and balconies to establish what, uh, what sightlines they may have. Uh, the building is certainly, uh, visible, uh, primarily along Bel Air, um, a little bit on Ridge Place and certainly on Dogwood Drive. In, uh, in our modeling, we can say that the modeling is a, is a very accurate representation of what's there. In terms of scaling, we're able to, uh, with the help of the computer, we're able to calculate, uh, through the ground plane and scale off height and, uh, in my opinion, we've given a pretty accurate representation of, uh, how this fits into the community. Um, and then finally, the other thing I want to add is again, part of submission package, we also did shadow study. And, uh, I will say that the, um, we did a shadow study two times during the year, both, uh, during the summer and one during the winter solstice. So we've got two extremes. Uh, what we discovered in the modeling is that the stepping of the building, um, at the fourth and the fifth floor, certainly reduced the impact to the street. Fourth and fifth floors wind up casting shadows essentially on, uh, on the same building. With the orientation and location of the site and community, uh, shadowing is, uh, mostly on Dogwood Drive and on Forward. Houses that are to the south and to the east of this development are not overshadowed by it. Obviously, the, uh, the winter, um, shadow studies, everything casts long shadows. Uh, this building will do the same, but again, there is some benefit to the stepping of the building. So I think that, um, for me, that just kind of concludes an overview of the submission package.
Thank you.
And will be available to answer questions.
Thank you. And I believe I see Mr. Crusell, have you sorted out your technical difficulties?
I think so.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Basically, Mike and I, can you hear me clearly? Okay. Mike and I bought this property a year or two ago. And with the, um, idea that we would make it into a rental unit for seniors, okay? Well, I think we went out with a six story thirty suite and we got a lot of feedback from the, from the neighborhood. That wasn't going to fly. So we scaled it down to twenty five units, um, which the building is a lot more expensive than, than the thirty unit. Um, it's a stepped building like Will had said. So here we are. This is my third time in front of council. I'm very aware, and Mike, you're very aware, contaminated sites. And I'm very aware that this site has been vacant for probably fifteen to sixteen years, very aware that the council and past councils have been irritated by this site. So part of our procedure was to come in and, and clean the site up and, and, um, basically invest in something that we're, um, going to get some, some return on. So having said that, um, if it was viable to go to one story, two story, three story, four story, then it would have been presented to council over the last fifteen years. So here we are at the third, um, time in front of council and, uh, we think it's a good project. Um, I know there's, if there's a number of, um, negatives about the height, but I think, um, in all fairness, with eight thousand people in Ladysmith or thereabouts, you're bound to getting to get some negative and some positive.
That's it. Thank you very much. Ms. Smith, I believe that concludes the submission by the proponents. So we'll open the floor for public submissions. And I'll make that our first call for public submissions. Ms. Smith?
Yes, your worship, uh, I'll let Neil Pearson in. If you'd like to unmute.
Hi, are you there? Oh, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, my name is Neil Pearson and I live at one one nine eight Forward Road with my wife Denise. And we're directly across from the Dalby site, both site. Um, we're not opposed at all to the site being developed. We're longtime residents of Ladysmith and we've been on Forward Road for about five years now. And, um, I've got some questions, but I know you can't, you can't answer questions. So, um, having been the first time phoning in, I'll just give you what, um, my thoughts and maybe you can review them. And, uh, the, I guess the biggest concern we have is parking in the area. I know the current zoning, I don't know if they're making amendments to allow less parking than what the zoning allows. But just sort of from a realistic point of view, uh, there's twenty nine parking spots on the property with, for twenty four units. I'm assuming probably every unit's going to have at least one vehicle with probably half the units having a couple of vehicles, which would require probably a total of thirty six spots. This is probably not the actual requirements of, for, for the building code, but probably closer to a real, realistic estimate. And that doesn't account for the visitor parking in the commercial unit. The commercial, commercial unit is going to have staff, they're going to have people working there. They're also going to have customers, hopefully. Um, so if it's a viable operation, they're probably going to need four or five spots um, in, in the area for parking. Where they, I, I, I'm kind of a little concerned about where the, all these people are going to be able to park. There's not a lot of parking on Forward Road. There's nothing on Dogwood Road, maybe a couple of spots across the road. And I'm just concerned that it's going to create a jam up of parking in, in the area. With the improvements of the site, are they going to, are they going to allow parking on Forward Road? And if so, um, is it going to create kind of a blind turnout coming out of the underground parking? Because if, if there's parking down Forward Road and people are coming out of the underground parking, it's, there's not going to be much visibility for people pulling out. Um, our neighbors tried to put a tree on the, on the boulevard and next door to us and city council or, or city planner said you couldn't put a tree up there because it was going to limit visibility on Forward Road and they were concerned about that. So to have four or five cars parked there and people coming out of a parking garage, I don't think it's going to be any better. Um, and another issue I guess is you increase traffic along the area. I think there's a real concern with this on this road that there needs to be some sort of traffic calming. Because we live on the corner and I know the speed limit's forty to fifty along there and people are, are consistently driving at seventy kilometers an hour. You're adding in another twenty five, thirty cars coming in out of there. I think we're just, it's, it, it could be a problem in the future. So we're looking, you know, what maybe doing, maybe you could look at doing something to slow the traffic down a little bit. And then I know you did a traffic study, um, for one day. I don't know if the results are available to the public and I don't know what that traffic study was meant to show. All I saw was that it's showing that there's a crosswalk. And, um, I don't know if that's, um, I don't know if there's anything else was proven shown from the, from the traffic study. And then the last thing I guess is currently we're allowed sixty units per hectare in town and that's, that's what the bylaws show. Um, I'm not an expert on bylaws and planning, but there has to be a rationale behind sixty units per hectare. Is that, is it a safety issue? Is it a traffic flow issue? Is it a density issue? Is it? But if you go more than that, is it going to look, is it going to change the look of the town? And make the town look inconsistent? So to go from sixty units per hectare to a hundred and eighty is a huge increase. So it's three times the current, three times the current guideline. So I know, I know you've probably looked at that, but that would be a concern of ours. I really don't have too much else to say. Um, I appreciate your look along us to talk. We understand that the, the existing building is an eyesore of the town. You may think development would be great. Um, we appreciate the, the local business guys, Mike and Frank are, are, you know, they're local people and they want to spend some money and, um, to, to put this project together and we support it. I just really, like I said, we're really concerned about the parking. Um, thanks a lot for letting me talk tonight. I probably maybe a little longer than you'd hope, but, uh, I just wanted to be able to let you know what I thought of the project. So.
Thank you so much.
For the time.
Thanks, Neil. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Smith, our next submission.
Uh, your worship, uh, Russell Barling. You just unmute, Mr. Barling?
Give me the thumbs up if you can hear me, folks. Very good. Um, so I, I had to think long and hard about participating in this, in the council. Um, I've been in front of you guys five times and I've never had to answer to any of the questions that I posed. So I'm not hopeful here. But while I in no way want to be seen as legitimizing tonight's process as a meaningful public consultation, I'm, I'm a person who is the most impacted uh, by your decision. So I feel the need to ensure that my questions are, again, a matter of public. As council is aware or will be aware, I've been active in the local media with concerns about this and other rezoning applications on Dogwood. What I've learned is that there's at least a dozen other residential homeowners in my immediate era, area that share my concern about the random nature in which these are apparently, these rezoning amendments are, are apparently being approved, particularly for the high density residential development. Municipal planning is, is a very complex process on, on many levels. I, I get that. And it should be because people's livelihoods are at stake as are their property values. So when council decides to allow two high density residential developments in a seventy seater pub in one city block in the middle of the historic residential neighborhood, we should have some assurances that you guys have done. You know, you've, you've got some well researched reasons for doing so. Now I'll get to this particular bylaw. In short, with that in mind, I, I just submit here questions for your own consideration. Okay? Have you undertaken any analysis that identifies the two hundred block of Dogwood as the most appropriate place in Ladysmith to approve high density residential and entertainment properties? On another level, have you undertaken a community impact assessment that would allow you to conclude that these developments and Dalby's in particular will not completely disrupt the quality of life for the residents in this area? Have you assessed how much residential property prices will be impacted by having to live in the shadow of the, of the unprecedented scale, both height and density of the development proposed for this site? Have you assessed what these high density developments and commercial entertainment facilities will do to traffic volumes along a narrow and acute confines of where Dogwood, Dogwood meets First Avenue and Forward Road? Right? Finally, we presently have fourteen people living on Forward Road. Right? Yet the main water main here has collapsed three times in the last five years at the cost of local homeowners who got flooded. The zoning proposal we are considering here tonight will ultimately see the permanent users of that antiquated infrastructure multiply by five times. So I would ask, have you assessed whether the presently unstable water, power, and sewage utilities will be able to withstand such a dramatic increase in new users? If your immediate reaction was to say no to any and all of these questions I just asked, then I would respect, I would respectfully suggest that you lack the information you need to make this important precedent setting decision on the primacy of our current zoning bylaws. You should accept that the town would be best served by waiting for the newly appointed steering committee for the next official community plan to consult with the public about our town's future in a professional manner. And if you answered yes to any of these questions, I would ask, why is it that, why isn't that information on the table in advance of this meeting so that we can consult in an informed manner? That's all I have to say. I look forward to your answers in whatever form you care to give them to.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith, the next participant, if you will.
Hey, your worship, I'll just, uh, the next participant is Catherine Gilroy. You just unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Okay. So my letter was submitted, so I think you all know how I feel. So I won't, uh, I won't go on about that. I do apologize. I used a wrong term in there. When I said a change to the DPA, I was referring to development permit area. I meant zones, but I'm sure you understood what I was talking about. So, um, my comment, um, has to do with, it's kind of referencing what the city planner talked about regarding the amenity, community amenity contribution. And I'm hoping that you will be okay with me making a comment on that. I mean, I, I, I really feel that it actually contributes directly to this discussion, but you can tell me now if it's inappropriate.
No, it's part of the bylaw provision. So please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so when we look at the associated staff report of March second, we see that the FMC Holdings is proposing a community amenity contribution of a hundred and seventy five thousand, three hundred dollars. And add that, of that, a hundred and sixty one, three fifty is for investigation and mitigation of the contamination of the Ford Road right of way. So it doesn't obviously include any of the properties. So it's not the adjacent properties. It's not the site. They're just talking about the actual road and I'm, I don't need to ask a question on that. That's what I'm reading into the, the information that I have. In the letter from Tara West contained in that same information package, uh, it's showing the breakdown of the hundred and sixty one thousand, three fifty, which is part of that entire contribution. Um, there's no indication that mitigation or remediation is included. Um, it's only for drilling, risk assessment, reviews and reports, and of course, associated fees, which are significant. So when we look at that, all we're looking at really is an investigation investigative process that FMC wants to use as part of a community, um, amenity contribution. And I, I think I'm right on that. I mean, you can stop me right now and tell me if I'm wrong.
This is a public hearing, so we don't debate, Ms. Gilroy. You can just finish your comment.
I just want to make sure I'm on the right track.
Yeah, we don't discuss it during the submission, but we can clarify during the discussion of council.
Gotcha. Okay. So, um, when you're considering a community amenity contribution, uh, given that this is considered an amenity to the community, um, the information the information that's pulled from that hundred and sixty-one, three fifty, will all of that information be a matter of public record? Now that's a question, but it's, it's kind of rhetorical. I'll just leave it with you. It is my hope that that will be true. Because we're basically supplying FMC with an opportunity to contribute to the community. So by extension, that information should become a public, a matter of public record. I think a lot of people would be interested in learning more about that. I would certainly be. So that's pretty much all I have to say on that. I know that it's very complicated with brownfield mitigation and remediation. So obviously we can't get into that because that's not part of the discussion. But since we did reference the community amenity contribution, I would like you to consider that if that is approved as a community amenity contribution, that the information that's generated from the reports that Tara West comes up with, that that becomes a matter of public record. And just to, and just to note that none of this has anything to do with mitigation or remediation. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, our next participant.
Yes, your worship, Nicola Palmer.
Hi there. It's Nicola Palmer. I live at the three, three, three White Street in Lady Smith on the corner of Fourth Avenue. I made a late email, so I just thought I'd put my hand up and say it out loud. I had a look over the Lady Smith Town Plan and I'm not, I'm very stressed with COVID, so I'll say that initially. And I, one of my concerns is that so many changes or proposed changes to the town bylaws during this time of a global pandemic where people are stretched anyways, and seeing that you have a new plan in the works, can we pause these things that are major decisions, like putting a five-story building up? Until that town plan and people in the community have an opportunity to consult on a new town plan? I think a five-story building does not fit at all into the neighborhood. There's other buildings that are multi-residential, two-one-nine Dogwood, two-three-three Dogwood and two-one-eight Bayview. None of those buildings are five stories. Like just, I can't understand how five-story would fit in. And then as other callers have said, the volume of traffic that would be produced by a twenty-five unit building with a possible commercial on the basement. I feel like that's a pretty unsafe part, Forward Road turning in. It's not easy to see. And if you have a giant five-story building in your way, it'd probably be harder to see. So I had a look at the developer's pictures. I'm on White, as I said, White and Fourth. I can see the top of Dalby's as it currently is. So I think I would probably see the third, fourth and fifth stories and not the ocean anymore. So that's a concern for me as well. And yeah, it's one I again stress that I myself, I'm a parent, I am a working parent. And in the middle of COVID, it's hard to navigate and keep track of all the changes that council is trying to do. And then also be actively engaged in this process and zoom process of being involved and trying to have our, my voice as a resident of Lady Smith heard. So I wonder, yeah, and I'm happy to hear that a new town plan is coming and that I'll be able to be part of that, but this process is challenging in this challenging time. So I appreciate that you've let me have time to speak tonight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, our next speaker.
Your worship, Mr. Bert Scholl.
There we go. Thumbs up if you can hear me. Okay. So my name is Bert Scholl. My wife and I live at one-twenty-seven Forward Road. And so we're the last house on that, on that road. And so the comments I have are related to traffic, parking and safety. So the this road, when we get people coming in, of course, they have to come, go back out on the same road. It's not a true road. So people come down the road and they may be there in error or they're delivering something. And generally they go to the end of the road where I live and they go to turn around there. So they go partially into my driveway and then back out and off they go. So, so far, this hasn't been a great difficulty for us. We put up with that. But now with this building going up, there's going to be a fair amount of increased traffic. So it's going to become a lot more intrusive. So that's a bit of a concern. And the other thing is that in our particular case, being at the end of the road, when we back out of our property, we, we, there's a small area there where I can just back out onto the road and then leave, go forward to leave Forward Road. Now that area I'm referring to is probably fourteen feet by seventeen feet or so. And so if people come down the road, they just see this as, as parking spots, two great parking spots. But if people park there, then this is, this makes it very difficult for me to leave my driveway. So because I, I have difficulty turning. So what I have to end up doing is to bypass any cars that are parked there. I have to go to the opposite side of the road where I shouldn't be. It's probably illegal to, to drive there. So that is a problem. And I think what I'm going to have to ask the city to do is to make that area a no, no parking area. So I can safely leave my driveway. So the other thing to do with safety, and that's the pedestrian crossing that I believe it's referenced, referenced in the documentation somewhere, that the there's a proposal of sorts that the crossing between this new building and the other side of the building to where the bus stop is, that that should be a signaling device there for that crossing. So I'm just saying I would support that. I think that I would urge, urge them to do that. There's going to be a fair amount of pedestrian traffic there, most of it going downtown. So they probably wouldn't want to be going in the other direction where there is a crossing further back. And the, the last thing that I have is I think we have to get the builder to be aware of the sightline at, as you leave Forward Road to say, go downtown. We, we come next to the new building. There is difficulty in looking to the left, leaving Forward Road. Or at least there was difficulty when Mr. Dalby was running it. There used to be boats there or, or vehicles. So I just want to make sure that the developer does not have any structures or trees or shrubs that could interfere with the light, with the sightline when we leave Forward Road. So that if you're leaving Forward Road, looking to the left down Dogwood. So and that's pretty well all I've got except to say that I was always curious to know whether or not the, the city would be at the same time as they're doing the, the work to clear up the, the, the oil and gas that's on the road. When they're digging that up, I'm wondering if that would be a good time to be also replacing the water line. We had a, there was a break there this summer and we suffered seventy thousand dollars worth of damage to our house. So and I understand that that line is somewhere in the area of sixty years old. So maybe that's something to, to consider. So I've emailed my comments to you. So maybe you don't have to make notes. Sorry. Height of the building? Oh yeah, the, oh yeah. So my son's just reminding me that mentioned the, the height of the building, but I meant, did mention that at the beginning, that we would support a building that would be up to four stories high, but not five. And so that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scholl. Ms. Smith, our next participant.
Noel McKenna, I'll bring him in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll be quick. I don't want to take up too much of your time. Basically, this proposed building, it just is so long what the OCP is allowing at present with density and height. And I, like other people have mentioned, since we're starting the new, the process of reviewing the OCP and working towards a new one, why don't we let that play out before we do these major rezoning changes that people are asking for? Because it's just that building as they're presenting it. It's, it's not going to be a benefit. It's just that road can be hard enough at times. I sometimes, I live on one-two-five and Suman Street. And quite often when I'm trying to go up the laneway, so coming off of first there, I've probably almost been rear-ended like a couple dozen times in the last five years. Because people just aren't watching, you know, they're driving behind you. So anyways, my main concern is I, I want the OCP process to play out and be a meaningful thing because we're spending two hundred thousand dollars on it. And I'd like to get our money's worth out of it. So I'm against this building as it stands. I think if the developer went back and really worked on a good building, he'd be able to come up with something that would be like, I, I always envisioned high-end condos going there because you get a beautiful water view. And if it was a building that was built properly to conform with the site, you know, he'd have no trouble making money. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKenna. And Ms. Smith, the next speaker. Ms. Smith, do we have another speaker?
Sorry, worship, Margot Lenny.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lenny. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. My husband and I live at one-one, one A Gifford Road. First of all, we just wanted to say that we certainly don't oppose the concept. The current site is an eyesore, so anything will be an improvement over what exists there right now. We do completely disagree though with the five stories. We think it sets a bad precedent for the area. And I think the, the point that the gentleman right before me made was, you know, that it is a site that just begs for maybe something that's a little higher end. And given this real estate climate right now, I'm sure that you would have lots of buyers who would be available to, to purchase these units when they were built. The third concern that we have is the modern facade that is so close to the charming and historic downtown. It just seems out of character when it is so close to downtown to put in something that has such a modern facade. Fourth concern is with regards to the traffic that would be exiting and entering onto Forward Road. That is a blind corner around there. And to me, it just seems like it's inviting traffic accidents. So I think that that needs to be reconsidered as well. And the other concern that we have is with regards to residual parking. So say there are residents or there are visitors or there are customers there and there aren't enough parking spots. Does that mean that people are just going to park freely on Forward Road, on Bayview, on Dogwood and Gifford Road? You know, are we going to get into big city problems where people are going to have to be issued with parking permits so that they can, like, that's not the kind of thing that we need in this lovely little town. And, and that's, that's it. That's all I had to say. And thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lenny. Ms. Smith, our next participant.
Yes, your worship, C. Mathers. If you'll just unmute.
Thank you. I made a written submission. Oh, sorry. My name is Christine Mathers. I live at two-ten Dogwood Drive. I am within sixty meters of the, of the subject property and I can assure you that I have never received any written notice from anyone. I'd like very much to know how that was supposedly delivered. It didn't come in the mail. It wasn't tucked in my door. I never received anything. I agree with the comments of the last speaker, the modern appearance with Facebook and Facebook and metal trim sounds a little bit like a McDonald's to me. And I, not only is that in conflict with Heritage Downtown, but even the Heritage Homes in the immediate vicinity. I'm not in one, but there are lovely examples and down Bayview. I take issue with the developer's statement that if there was any other viable opportunity for that lot, that it would have been done before now. I think that's a weak argument. And doesn't prove anything. There's many difficulties with the site and particularly access. I cross the street at the crosswalk just about every day to get my mail. I take my life in my hands each time that I do it. There is little point attempting to cross if there is a vehicle coming, even with what I think are those fabulous additions that the town has installed on the signposts indicating that there's a crosswalk. It's never safe. I've nearly been run down by the local transit bus and I'm not sprinting. I consider myself highly visible. I also have the laneway behind my house that there's an exit only. Sorry, a no exit, but an entrance only, right at the bend of Dogwood where it turns into First Avenue or vice versa. And I also have frequently nearly been rear-ended there. I slow, I signal well in advance since the drain work was repaired. I understand it used to flood the Lion's Villa. And the little slope there is regraded. It's somewhat steeper. I give anyone coming behind me maximum notice of what I'm about to do and it is not safe. I don't understand how a disabled person, for example, anyone in a scooter or a wheelchair would, would safely get on and off that property. To me, it's just inconceivable. It wouldn't be worth attempting. And I'm sorry, I, the developer also said that their proposal, the five stories above ground is very much in keeping with the heights at Second, Third and Fourth Avenue. I take issue with that. And certainly there was an earlier speaker who lives at Second and can see the roof of the current building there. And he also made the statement, which again, I think is absolutely incorrect, that there are very few corridors from which it would be visible. He mentioned that Dogwood was one. I find it unusual that he didn't mention Bayview. And I think Bayview is one of the loveliest streets in town, just from where I am. And the rest, pretty much the rest of what I had to say, I put in writing, again, I think in attempt to slip this in prior to the new OCP process. And considering that the developer may have done everything that he was required to do to contact nearby people, although he didn't contact me in writing, I'm, I'm convinced that in a pandemic, he quite deliberately did the very least that was required to solicit input on this. And that is the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith, our next speaker.
Your Worship, I don't see any more hands in the audience.
I will do a second call for submissions. We've got two more calls, so please take a moment to consider your thoughts and provide input. And I'll do a third and final call for submissions on bylaws 2062 and 2063.
Oh. Your Worship, we do have one. We have John Manson. Please unmute.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to weigh in on a point about the parking. I understand that the parking is, the parking being provided is significantly less than what the bylaw requires. The variance that you're going to have to be looking at to allow the project would be in order 25 or 30% if you do the calculation in accordance with the zoning bylaw. So I think council needs to be aware of that. You will need to consider that at the development permit stage. And you're not looking at that at this point. These are not concurrent, these processes are not being run concurrently. I'm not sure why, but you're not dealing with it at this point. So there's a piece of the pie here you're really not considering. And I think with the comments that have come in for the public, you should at least be aware of that. I think Julie can confirm, but I think the parking requirement is in the upper 30s, 36, 38, something like that. So there's a significant variance that you're going to be kind of forced to looking at if you are actually wanting to build what you're seeing on those drawings at some future date. That's what you'll be considering. Thank you.
Mr. Manson, can you just give us your address for the record?
I'm way out of town, not even close.
Yeah, I just had a flashback, that's all. For those who are watching the public hearing, Mr. Manson is our previous director of Public Works. So we know that voice very well, and he knows our bylaws and our infrastructure very well. I thought maybe you were coming to answer questions that may have been posed. But I appreciate your input. Is there any other input, Mr. Manson?
I don't think so. I think at this point, that's the point I thought you wanted to know.
Thank you very much. Nice hearing from you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Ms. Smith, any further participants on our third call?
I don't see any, Your Worship.
I'm going to drag it a little bit longer and see if anyone else wants to make a submission. I want to thank everyone who's given us submissions and all of those who gave very thoughtful written submissions as well. I'm not seeing any further hands, so we will drag it a little longer. Ms. Smith, anyone else?
No, Your Worship.
So I will move then if there are any written submissions that have come in.
Yes, Your Worship. I'll just read those. Okay, the first one is from Gala Hunter. And she says that her concerns are number, as follows. The height, five stories is way too high for this area. Three would be more acceptable. I would not like to see Forward Road become a parking lot for people living and for visitors at the new building and for the proposed pub across the street. And she sent in a subsequent email just advising that she lives at 123 Forward Road.
Thank you.
The next email is from Neil Pearson. Good evening. My name is Neil Pearson. Sorry, I'm just moving my screen here.
From 119A Forward Road?
Correct.
Yes. Well, he spoke at the beginning, so.
Okay. Okay, I'll read it. I'll still read it. Directly across from the Dalby site proposed development. We do welcome development in our community and are not opposed to this site being developed. As a longtime resident of Lady Smith and resident on Forward Road, I have a few concerns and questions regarding the proposed building at 201 Dogwood Drive. Parking, how many spots are required for the building under the current zoning? It is not clear from the drawings how many parking spots have been allocated to each following. Can you please advise how many for each? Residents' parking, visitors' parking, commercial parking spaces, accessible parking. Based on the drawings, there looks to be approximately 29 parking spots. If you were to assume that all 24 units would have at least one vehicle, and 12 of those units may have two vehicles, that would require a total of 36 parking spots just for the residences. I know this may not be the actual requirements, but probably closer to a realistic estimate. This doesn't account for visitor parking and the commercial unit. Currently, it is unknown what the business will be. However, if it is a busy and viable business, there will be staff and customers, assume two or three staff at times. Where will the two or three staff park? And assuming it is a busy business, where will clients, customers, staff park? Forward Road, Dogwood, Bayview, First Avenue? With the improvements to the site, will parking be allowed on Forward Road? And if so, will it not create a blind turn coming out of the underground parking? As there will be cars parking, blocking the visibility from cars driving down Forward Road. Along with the parking issues, increased traffic in the area will be a problem for the safety of pedestrians and vehicles. We live on the corner, and we know firsthand how busy this corner and street is. Trying to cross the street on this busy corner, cars are speeding. It is a blind corner, and the vehicles are usually traveling quickly around the corner. We understand that a traffic study was completed one day in March of 2021. Will the town be doing another traffic study as a one-day, or in early COVID stages does not seem realistic, especially when there are two other commercial developments being considered or approved or are approved in the same area. The proposal said there was a traffic impact assessment done. Will this be released to the public? Why is the current guideline 60 units hectare for multifamily? What goes into the rationale behind 60 units per hectare? Why do you want to approve an increase to 180 per hectare? This is three times the current guideline. The height of this building is out of character for both the Dogwood Drive and Forward Road area, but more importantly, for all of Lady Smith. This is much higher than any existing building in Lady Smith. On Dogwood, it is a four-story with only three and a half stories above ground. Having this height will change the character of the area and set a precedent for other building projects in residential neighborhoods. For us personally, this building will completely shadow our home from November until February from noon on. According to page 45 of the regular meeting agenda on March 2, 2021, the Community Planning Committee review advised the following. The application was considered by CPAC on January 6, 2021. CPAC passed the following resolution. It was moved second and it carried that the Community Planning Advisory Committee supports in principle a design as proposed, in particular, the building design and proposed density at the proposed location, 201 to 203 Dogwood Drive. And the proposal changed from rental to for-market dwelling units. And recommends that council consider the following items. A, CPAC acknowledges that building height and views are a public concern, but should not be a deciding factor of approval. And then he goes on to say, if height and views are a public concern, and if you have height restrictions in place for buildings, please explain why the height of this building would not be a deciding factor in the approval process when you have bylaws on height restrictions. We understand that the existing building is an eyesore to the town, and you may think that any development would be great. We appreciate that these are local business people who have also lived here many years. Please just take the time to properly study how this will affect the safety of Lady Smith residents while walking or driving or crossing the road. Please make sure you have taken into account how this will affect our town as well. Thank you for your time and commitment to making Lady Smith a great place to live.
Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead.
Your Worship, I have two more from the same person, Nicola Palmer. Dear Town of Lady Smith representatives, please find this letter in opposition to the proposed development at 201 and 203 Dogwood Drive, Lady Smith BC. I cannot understand how a five-story building fits into the neighborhood. There are other buildings in the neighborhood, 219 Dogwood, 233 Dogwood, and 218 Bayview that are multi-tenant buildings, and none are five stories. I am also very concerned that the volume of traffic at a 25-unit building would bring onto that corner, which is already difficult to navigate safely, both from Bayview and Forward. I am also concerned that my ocean glimpse will be overtaken by a five-story building at the old Dalby site. With COVID and the stressors of the community employment, decreased childcare, it is now the time to be making ad hoc adjustments to the town plan. Can you pause this until such time that a, I understand a new plan is in the works, new town plan can be set forth with community consultation? Nicola Palmer, 333 White Street. And finally, she adds that she thanks council for the opportunity to speak at tonight's town consultation. She forgot to mention that she consulted with BC government remediation, and they have the Dalby site listed as having independent remediation after underground fuel tanks were removed in 2019. There is no information that further actions need to be taken, and the site is now listed as non-risk. Nicola Palmer.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes our submissions. So the public hearing for bylaw number 2062 and bylaw number 2063 for the construction of a 25-unit multifamily residential building at 201 and 203 Dogwood Drive is now closed. No further input or submissions can be submitted to council, and these bylaws are on tonight's council meeting agenda for further consideration. That takes us to, I believe, our regular council meeting. I'll just give five minutes to all of council and those watching, just to take a quick break. So I'll just take a five-minute recess, and we'll be back at 7:26 on my clock or five minutes from now. Thank you. I'm stone-faced. Doesn't even flinch. And if we can get everyone back, we will resume. Just a reminder, if you aren't speaking, to please mute your microphones, Ms. Smith. Just the shuffling papers. All right. Just wait a couple more minutes. It was like at the provincial announcement for the hospital last week, we were all told to mute our microphones, and then during the whole announcement, the minister is shuffling papers. All right, so we have everyone back. We will resume our meeting. This takes us to our regular council meeting portion of this evening, and we're on to bylaws number six. Ms. Smith, I believe we're on item 6.1, and that's the subject of public hearing number 1, 670 and 674 Farrell Road and Lot 20 TransCanada Highway. Item 6.1.1, recommendation. Sorry, I see a hand from Minutetaker. Ms. Boma? Okay, maybe that was an error. Did we lose Ms. Boma?
It looks like it.
Okay, do we want to wait a moment? Okay, thank you. All right, so we do have recommendations. Sorry, I've got so many. The subject, any additional matters raised at the public hearing, council proceed with third reading of official community plan bylaw 2003, number 1488, amendment bylaw number 63, 2021, number 2060. So that's the recommendation before us, and if there's any questions for staff of clarification based on the feedback received, I'll open up the floor to members of council. Go ahead, Counselor Patterson.
There was a question asked by one of the viewers in regards to the number of single-family units. And it seemed to be a difference from what that person had read, being 45 to what we were told as 60.
Thank you. I'll put that through to Ms. Thompson. I believe that there might be some confusion between the multifamily units front- Thank you, I'll put that through to Ms. Thompson, I believe that there might be some confusion between the multifamily units fronting on Feral Road and the single family or duplex units up on the other road, Ms. Thompson.
Thanks through the chair. Um, the multifamily area would be the R three A proposed area and that area would allow a maximum of sixty units based on the maximum density of thirty seven units per hectare in the R three A zone. And the single family area which is proposed also for duplexes for the R one zone, they're proposing twenty four individual parcels.
Thank you.
Okay, so for that, uh, so what is the proposal uh for just for the um audience, because when we're talking units per hectare, same as the the.
So it's sixty multifamily units fronting on Feral and twenty four lots on the remainder of the site.
So not sixty uh single family.
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else want to clarify councillor Jacobson?
Uh, maybe if we could just clarify that uh the single family homes would be, it would be possible to build homes that have suites in them.
Yeah, so twenty four lots, but they could have suites or potentially. Yeah, depending on the lot size, as long as it exceeds seven hundred and eighty square meters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson.
Through you, through you to staff. So the maximum number of vehicles that would be realistic from that area with some being duplex and with in loss or suites. Would that bring the traffic up to potentially a hundred cars because of a hundred people?
I'd have to put that through to staff, I I would have to refer to the previous traffic study, but Ms. Thompson, do you have any in or response to that?
No, I I don't recall from memory um what the predictions were in terms of car volume in the traffic impact assessment.
Thank you, but yeah, I think that if you say sixty multifamily units, twenty four single family lots, but could have suites and or duplexes, I think that's a a pretty good round number, maybe somewhat higher or somewhat lower. Councillor Johnson.
Just as follow up, so making the assumption, I'm stating it as an assumption of a hundred cars. Was the ratio that it's going to be going down to Feral versus um going up on Sterling?
Well, the twenty four residential lots would access off Sanderson. Uh, and the sixty.
Fifty cars.
Yeah, the sixty um, the sixty multifamily units would front onto Feral, I would believe.
They would have access go, did we also?
Uh, not based on the plan, there was an emergency access, but that was to be used uh according to the proponent for construction traffic and then as an emergency access if for some reason the Sanderson exit was blocked. But again, then the Feral Road multifamily site would front onto Feral Road. Um, and they'd have to use the emergency access route to get up there, but I understand that the there was contemplated of closing off that access in in except for in case of emergency. Once the project was complete, but I'd have to put that through to staff.
Would you like me to respond? So um, that's right, the single family parcels would be accessed off of the Sanderson connection. And the emergency connection would not be available to through traffic um except for foot traffic and bicycle traffic as well. But not for vehicles except in an emergency. And the proposed multifamily area, depending on the configuration of the buildings could potentially access from Feral. Possibly using the end of that emergency connection. Or from Sanderson, depending on where the buildings are cited and the most appropriate location for the access.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address any, I'll come back to councillor Johnson if, just in case anyone else has any comments or questions at this time. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet, no councillor or councillor Stevens, and then I'll go to councillor Patterson and then councillor Johnson for round two.
Uh, thank you. Um, in the comments from the public, it was, it was brought up around the the trees and um I know myself, it's, 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 it's a fair enough comment, ha- having read it a few times that the uh the the treatment of the tree buffers maybe seems radical, I don't know if staff have any points they would like to raise around that, the ones that stand out in my mind is that the park parcel will stay largely the same in the uh south or the north, we call it the northwest corner of the property, but then the buffer itself will have some transformation in terms of reducing trees because of a risk of of wind throw. Um, some of that I I understand is due to uh development that's been done continuously weakening potentially or opening up um making the trees more vulnerable, but I didn't know whether staff could make a general comment about that, just to address some of the public questions.
Through staff.
Through the chair. There's also um the wildfire assessment and there are competing interests. The tree protection on one hand and then wildfire risk on the other hand, um and they're competing with each other, so the wildfire assessment does identify that any conifer within ten meters of a building site would not be um recommended due to the wildfire risk. And so the tree buffer, it, the, the Arborist report does recommend to remove the trees because of the risk of wind throw. But also because um of what the wildfire assessment says as well, so it if we were to recommend retaining some of those trees, we would have to look at their proximity to the building site and whether or not that would be feasible. And it doesn't look like it would be feasible for some of the lots, the way it's laid out currently.
Thank you. Okay, uh councillor Patterson, oh, I've got councillor Patterson, if it's okay, I'll go to councillor Mackay and then I'll come to those who have spoken already, councillor Mackay.
Thank you, um, I just, I ha- I I'm a little troubled with the um potential for all of the properties to have duplexes on them in terms of being two full sized houses. Can you give us an idea of how many of the properties are of a size that they would accommodate duplexes?
Ms. Thompson. While you're doing that, I can talk, I know that any, any single family site can have a suite in it, so it would automatically, you know, regardless there's a potential for two dwellings within any of those residential parcels, but Ms. Thompson about the duplex potential.
I do have that information in the staff report, which I can pull up here, I don't have it right in front of me. Um, and I don't recall the number, but if you just wanted to give me a minute, I could find that for you.
Go ahead, while you're doing that, um, did you have any other questions councillor Mackay?
Uh, no, not, not at this point, I I have uh some thoughts around the highway access, but I'll save that for more of the discussion part.
Okay, uh, anyone else who hasn't spoken yet, if not, I'll go to councillor Patterson and then Johnson.
Uh, thank you, with the way I, this has got to do with the uh multifamily Feral Road access and the Sanderson with the, with the single family. The way I read the report or the presentation is that the multifamily would be accessing Feral Road. And the way um town planner presented it is possibly. So did I read it wrong or is the multifamily going to access Feral Road?
Through the staff.
Um. So I would think that the majority of the multifamily area would need to access off of Feral Road, but due to the topography. It's possible that some of the multifamily units, if they're built higher up closer to the proposed cul-de-sac area. That it might make sense for those particular units to access off of that end of Sanderson.
Okay, so there is not a distinct separation between the two.
So, yeah, I, just to clarify, because on the drawings I saw, the cul-de-sac had single family lots around it, so that would preclude that connection, but sorry, I just, now I'm confused.
It looked like there could, like, uh, there um, there is a road access, but it looks like it's got a rumble strip or something, so it would be emergency, but the way I read the report, it was all the mo- or understood the report was all the multifamily was destined for Feral. And the single family was destined for Sanderson, except in an emergency, but the way Julie kind of read it is they couldn't do both.
I'd have to put that through to staff, I can't, I can't clarify that.
Yeah, so just to clarify, the emergency access wouldn't be used as a a driveway except perhaps in the event that the end of it on Feral may be used to provide a driveway access to the multifamily units rather than a separate driveway access off of Feral, and I think that's something that the engineering department will look at when the development permit comes in. Um. If a development permit comes in and that's the access that I mean, that I referred to off of Sanderson that the, the cul-de-sac that's proposed would be more of a driveway, not a road and so it's something that needs to be looked at when we know the location of um the particular buildings and what those driveways where they should be located, what would be feasible um in terms of their location, does that clarify for you?
Sort of. We'll just leave it there for now, thanks.
Thank you, next I have councillor Johnson.
Thank you. My question is regards to the park and open space, in the comments were made was this was a site that was selected by staff in regards to accessing other areas. Um, can I have greater clarification of that, because what I see when I look at the topography it's probably a piece of land given to us because they can't build on it.
Through to staff. Sorry, I I can't even quite understand that one, but Ms. Thompson.
Well, if I may, my point being is.
She was just about to respond, I think councillor Johnson.
I, I want to clarify the question, make it easier for you.
You can provide clarification, that's okay, it's me, it's okay, the mayor.
It's just the per- the area that is designated as park and open spaces. It was said that area was chosen by staff because it's proximity to a better area for parkland or whatever. My question is, what other land is there? How do we know we can get that for parkland to tie in together? Or is this a piece of property that the builder can't build on, so is giving to us? And we have an opportunity either to take the land or cash and could it be better off by taking the cash to develop a better park in the area for the people?
Ms. Thompson, go ahead.
The, the proposed park was, I believe, determined um with previous staff who were working on this application back in twenty nineteen and the previous director of Parks Recreation and Culture, if I'm not mistaken. And so I think part of the reason why it was chosen was because of its proximity to um an existing area that's designated for future parkland and its potential to provide for a connection to that area. And I believe also additionally um that there aren't a lot of public parks kind of within the vicinity. So I believe that may be the reason why it was decided to take it as parkland rather than um cash and.
Thank you, I think I see Mr. Barfoot here to maybe explain to us the parks part of it, I understood that this parcel actually connected to the wilderness park that runs in behind Sterling, but uh through to Mr. Barfoot.
Uh, through the mayor and thanks Julie, I think Julie has done a great job of explaining why that parcel was um selected, it was, I believe, selected due to its connectivity to the existing park trail system. And looking at the south end of Lady Smith, it provides a lot more potential for future connectivity as well. So that's why that piece on that northwest cor- or sorry, southwest corner was likely chosen for the parkland.
Uh, I thought I was unmuted, you follow up councillor Johnson?
Yes, follow up. So, and the diagrams we have, we don't show the other parkland area, I would like to see how it does tie into that. And you say that it's, the terminology, I think, is future um forced preserve or something like that, use the terminology, how can we guarantee that'll happen?
I'd have to put that through to staff.
Yeah.
Sorry, could you just repeat the question, please?
Well, on the charts that we have here, I don't see the surrounding other area as park, I see it as potential development. How can we be sure that's not going to be developed?
Through the staff.
Yeah, um. The area directly south of the proposed park is within the R one zone, so it has the potential to be subdivided. When that subdivision application comes in, the approving officer can provide input into where an appropriate location uh for parkland would be. And if the approving officer decides that the parkland would be um in that area, then it would provide a connection between the proposed park and area that's already zoned for park nearby. And perhaps the approving officer can provide more detail on that.
Just a quick question, where is the approved parkland? I don't see it in relation to these charts.
So councillor Johnson, earlier in the process, it was laid out, like if you look, there's a large contiguous park that runs all the way behind Russell Road, Sterling Drive, all the way, and it's separated by one parcel from this parcel. So what the planner has tried to explain to us is that by blocking in that ba- back corner and then if there's a future subdivision of the the adjacent parcel, take that corner, you create the connectivity from this parcel all the way through that park that connects all the way through into town.
This park that you're referring to that has been established as parkland?
Yep.
Is it dedicated?
Yep. To thirty something acre or hectare, I can't remember, but it's a, it's a strip that runs in behind Sterling Drive. And uh the top part of Russell and Craig Road, but uh staff would have to give us more detail on exactly what the parcel looks like.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Bellobaba.
Uh, through the chair, uh, I can actually uh show how this would work on a map quite quickly if the chair would like.
That would, that would be very helpful because we're getting bogged down. And something I thought we'd already discussed at previous meetings.
So if you can see my screen here. Um, so these are the subject properties, this map is old, um, uh, this black lines the town boundary, so it now includes this property, so these two part, this area here is essentially the subject property, the proposed park as part of this development proposal will be back in this corner here. Um, and this is the parkland beyond uh that Mr. Barfoot was referring to and this is a.
Are you referring to the green area?
This green area, yes.
Okay.
Um, this is a large tract of crown land that is zoned for single family de- development. Um, so because of its size and existing configuration, in order to subdivide the approving officer would have to take five percent of that land as park. And it could be easily be taken to create a connection from the chunk of park on this property to get through to this area here in whatever format works, whether it be a trail, whether it be a wide swath of land. Um, so it would be quite easy to to have a parks taking from this land. Um, so it would be quite easy to, to have a parks taking from this land as part of subdivision. To ensure that this gap between this park and this park would.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Bellobaba. Uh, do we have anyone else with questions? I have some stuff on here. Maybe I'll just address, um. Some of the comments that I had heard, Ms. Rosen had commented about the tree cover. And the arborist report in that buffer around the site. I think Ms. Thompson already explained that well. Uh, based on the wildfire assessment and the, uh, the wind throw concerns from the arborist. It was proposed that either a, a, um. Nearly full removal of trees, but that they be removed and replaced with deciduous. Uh, replacements to help regrow that buffer. Um, I understand that those, that buffer would be protected as part of the proposed package. Is that correct? By covenant? Thank you. Uh, sorry if I, I was chicken scratching here to get as much as I can. Um, the comment on the hundred-year-old forest. Um, yeah, it's, we're always mindful of that. Every landowner has likely significant forests. Pre-development, much like the Gales or the Sterling Road, Sanderson areas, those were all forested areas before those homes were built. Um, so it's always a concern, but it's always something that we have to balance with the, the rights of a property owner and the. The housing needs in a community, but I do appreciate those thoughts. Um, but it does stand to, to recognize that the Gales or the Sterling Road neighborhoods were all very similar. Until they were logged and developed, um, as you see them today. And they're wonderful neighborhoods by all accounts and my experiences there have been the same. Um, I do have a question, the concerns on the number of units. I think we tried to cover that as well, but I'm not, still not sure I'm a hundred percent clear, and this is. The single-family access through Sanderson versus the multifamily access onto Farrell. Um, that makes it a lot more. Easy to consider what the traffic impacts may be like, but I do also want to comment on the comments of the, uh. Adjacent neighbor to the south. Um, when you see the road to lands beyond go to a dead end at that adjacent property. The anticipation, I think, would be that long-term that continues on and becomes another further access, whether that is to an extension of Farrell Road. Um, in the future or what have you. Um, so although often with neighborhoods and we heard some comments and read some, some, um, submissions in the written comments. About the traffic and so on, um, I often again have to contemplate the fact that. I heard the complaints about phase two from phase one and then about phase three from phase two and phase one. Um, yet these were the same plans that were put into motion that allowed those homes to be built, so it is very. Um, disruptive and we understand that the traveling of the trucks and stuff can be disruptive. Um, it's just that it's challenging because those were the same issues experienced by all of those that came before. And, uh, as much as I'm always thoughtful of those things, it would be like saying, well, the homes that were developed that. Live in today, we shouldn't have allowed to be built based on those same concerns about the truck, truck traffic and dust and so on. Um, I do hope very much, um. That when the development permit potentially comes forward for these sites, that there would be some conversation on mitigating. Um, the, uh, truck traffic impact and hopefully directing the vast majority of that onto Farrell Road. And I do want to just say that I think that looking back at the massive reports, um, mass of reports and also. A massive report, um, that there was a lot of engineering considerations given to a cut and fill solution to direct majority of the traffic onto Farrell Road. Um, as we see in a private strata next door at the Gales. Um, that requires a lot of engineering and from a hazard land development strategy standpoint. It's not always the best to use engineered structures when you can work with the land as best as possible to. To mitigate those engineering challenges with steep slopes and, and hazard lands. Um, so I appreciate that. From the town's perspective, not on a private strata development like the Gales next door. It's very difficult for our staff to rec- to, to recommend a very steep engineered slope. To get access up into the, to the upper plateau of that property, so that's why the solution that was brought forward. Was that at least in the interim, the single-family traffic would have to commute through. Sanderson, other than in emergency through this access down onto Farrell. And, uh, to my understanding and from a design perspective. I would think that the vast majority of any multifamily sites on the Farrell Road frontage would likely. Uh, get their egress and ingress from, from Farrell Road as well, so. I'm just addressing some of the comments that I had heard. Um, I just wanted to put that out there. If there was anything that I just said that was incorrect, please, staff always stop me. Um, but those are the understandings that I have through this process, and I just want folks to recognize that this is not. A thing that we do, council does not go out and solicit applications, applications come from landowners who wish to develop their lands. And it's our responsibility under the Local Government Act to receive and adjudicate those applications. So both in this case and in the, the subsequent public hearing, uh, discussion for Dogwood Drive. These aren't things that council is trying to do. These are things that council receive as applications from proponents. And we have to look through all of the, the options and adjudicate them, so. This property owner and proponent have brought forward their application and, and now we're looking at it, so. Um, I will go back to my speakers list. I think I have Counselor Patterson and then Johnson again.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, count, did we get a, a. A response to Counselor Mackay's question about the number of lots that had. Could have potential duplexes?
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
I couldn't, um, find it, um. But I, from what I recall from a previous staff report, is around twenty or twenty-one parcels. Most of the parcels that are proposed. Currently, um, the, uh, out of the twenty-four parcels exceed by quite a bit of the seven hundred and eighty. Square meter minimum lot size that would be required for a duplex parcel.
And that seven hundred and squared. Square meter, uh, size, that pertains to. Uh, any lot in town, does it not, could have a, if it's big enough, could have a duplex, so this is really nothing different?
That's part of the R one zone, I believe. If it's over seven hundred and eighty square meters, you can put a duplex on it, but Ms. Thompson can clarify that. And then I'll go to back to Counselor Mackay because that was her question.
Yeah, I can clarify. So the R two zone, the old town residential zone currently does have those regulations. Any parcel over seven hundred and eighty square meters, um, can have a duplex and that zone is primarily located in the old town of Lady Smith. The R one zone does not have that, um. But that's why it's being proposed as a site-specific amendment to the R one zone. And the regulations proposed mirror those in the existing R two zone.
Thank you. Just for further clarity on that, though, the, uh, R one zone, seven hundred and eighty square meters. You can have a suite, so you can have two dwelling units, but not typical duplex style. But you could have a two-bedroom, three-bedroom basement suite along with your regular home.
Yeah, that's correct. The, um, the, just as a little follow-up, the. Size restriction for a secondary suite is, um, considerably smaller than it would be if you were to opt for a duplex.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Patterson, you good for now? I'll go to Counselor Johnson.
I believe you're going to Counselor McKay first, McKay.
I think she wove me off, like, said, no, you're good, so go ahead.
Thank you, um, I have concerns about traffic. The traffic study for the proponent, the, the plan. I have some concerns, but I am more concerned about the larger scale picture of. Our traffic with our community. I see developments adding more and more traffic onto ways such as. Davis Road, which goes on to Dogwood Drive and to First Avenue and more and more vehicles. So I'm probably going to vote against the proposal because I don't have a good feeling. Of what, where we're going in regards to our traffic. Um, flows and traffic studies for the whole community. And I think this is just another little rivulet of traffic that's going to create a bigger problem and. I would like to see the bigger problem addressed so that we can handle that rivulet. Thank you.
And we will keep writing Ministry of Transportation letters and pushing them for a controlled intersection at South Davis. Uh, any other comments or questions? We don't have a motion on the floor. I don't believe we do have a recommendation in front of us. Counselor Mackay and then Vertanen and then Stevens. Counselor Mackay.
Thank you, um. Just in picking up with, uh, what Counselor Johnson was saying. The development's not over at the end of these. Projects that we're discussing here, there is another small parcel right at the bottom of. The one that we're looking at that will be developed as well. Um, and we just potentially will be bringing more and more people into this area. I think it's really critical that we do. Uh, be very vigilant about making sure that if this, if this is approved, that we make sure that we are continually harping on. The better access for South Davis Road. It, it is treacherous now and. It's. It's only going to get worse if we keep putting houses and, and developments in there, so, a- and I, and I wonder if. With the development, since the answer we get when we talk to highways is always. Well, our studies show that there's not sufficient pressure on the intersection. Maybe this is what we need to do to make sure that we can. Create enough pressure on the intersection to force that to happen because really it is woefully inadequate. Even as it stands now, so. Uh, if. There's always that sort of. Tension that you have to work with, with people to go in other direction to avoid the intersection because it's so terrible. Uh, well, then the pressure on it when the, when the testing is done, isn't there. It's very, very frustrating and, uh, so perhaps. Heaven help us that everybody stays safe, but i- if we create sufficient development. Maybe that will finally force the hand to, uh, get the support we need to make that a, a safe. Intersection either at South Davis or by creating some other point, uh, by continuing Farrell along. Uh, I think there's, there's got to be some way we can get there.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Vertanen and then Counselor Stevens.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, um, I haven't had a lot to say just because. I liked this project before. I kept an open mind for the public hearing. And nothing came up that maybe changed my mind, so I would like to, uh, move the recommendation.
Thank you, moved. Do we have a second or? Second by Counselor Patterson, any discussion on the first motion, and that is that subject to matters raised at the public hearing, council proceed with. Third reading of official community plant, plan by law two thousand and three, number fourteen eighty-eight amendment by law number sixty-three, twenty twenty-one, number twenty sixty. So that's been moved and seconded for their discussion to Counselor Stevens and then Counselor Patterson.
Uh, thank you, I'll, I'll make the comments. I would have been happy to second, second the motion, but I do want to speak in general terms about. Uh, the, this, this whole project and, and the, the elements that I like about it. Um, this was a legacy, uh, project. We inherited it as a council. It had already been, um. As staff alluded to, even we've had staff turnover. It's been, been sort of on the books that long. Um, it's really, I think, been, been through the mill. I was the person who, uh, moved, uh, made the motion to have a second. Uh, community information meeting on it based on the new layout and, and that layout's been tweaked since based on. Um, the realities of the, to topography and putting in roads and things like that, so. The, uh, I mean, the primary thing I really like about this is, is the park space. It's, it's. I think the, the location of it and it's the fact that it, it has the potential to be contiguous. Park all the way from, from, uh, south to north in town. It's, it's, it's sort of a key little component to like that, and I like that it's being left natural and doesn't fall under the, um. The, the rest of the, uh, the arborist, uh, comments. That being said, the tree buffer itself, I really think that. Um, it wasn't exactly what we expected, uh, maybe from the past iteration, but it is, I think, an important. I won't say precedent, but an, an important, uh, component that we can, we can include in future developments in this area, in particular where you've got larger parcels. That aren't, um, necessarily stripped down, maybe like, um, I'm thinking in the, the portions of the Holland Creek area where. The, the, the trees were removed years ago, so, um. Uh, also, and it's, it's little details, but I said this at the, the past meeting where we discussed this, the, the fire safe, um. Uh, is, I think. Yeah, um, interface fires are going to be an, an ongrowing concern and, and more so with climate change. I, I was really happy to see the technical, uh, parts of the fire safe, um, report. But also it's spoken, I said this last time, to, to quality of build. Um, the materials that are specified. Are, tend to, tend to be higher end so that they're fire resistant, and I think that's something that will make the neighborhood, uh, look nice and. Um, and add value. Um, the, the allowances for duplexes, um, and the suites. Um, goes to affordability. Um, people building in this neighborhood are going to be able to have mortgage helpers or live in. And, uh, uh, maybe more of a starter, uh, home lo- uh, situation with a duplex. And that's, that's a, an element of housing that's lacking in, in Lady Smith. Um, the, the traffic, I agree with, uh, Counselor Johnson and I agree with, uh, um, Counselor Mackay. We're in a, in a very strange situation. At a micro level, um, I, I very much am comforted by the traffic report and that the flows won't be. Uh, of cars through Sanderson won't be, um, uh, uh, radically affecting the quality of anyone's life. The new residents or the existing residents, uh, but at the macro level, yeah, we need to redouble our efforts on the south end and it's. I, I, I hate to say that we're in this sort of, uh, ironic circle of, of, yeah, if we add in, as Counselor Mackay said, add enough critical mass, maybe it forces the issue. But, um, the housing is and growth is going to occur. We can, we can manage that on our end. Uh, the, the highway is not our purview, but it's certainly, uh, something we need a lever to affect, so I'm. I'm comfortable at a micro level. I'm not as comfortable at a macro level. I know there's, there's issues we need to sort out and I really want to do that. And I would agree with Counselor Mackay that we do that, but I'm happy, I would have been happy to second this motion and I'll be happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson, I believe you're next.
Uh, just, just a question, uh, and again, it's got to do with the, uh, separation of traffic. When the, um, development variant. Permit applications come forward, is that when we could? Basically request that the two different directions be written in stone?
I put that through to staff, but yeah, the dev- development permit would have some stuff there, but unless it's a provision in the development permit area, I don't know if you can demand that as part of the development permit. But I'd have to put that through to staff.
Um. Yeah, so. That's right, uh, the, the accesses. I don't think that the development permit area guidelines. Would force an access, um, one way or another. I think that it's more. If it meets engineering standards for access. Um, I'm sure the guidelines do speak to access. I couldn't really comment on what they say. I, I don't have them memorized, but. We are, just to clarify, the road layout. As it's proposed with the emergency access is, um, being. More or less secured by a covenant. So I don't know if that helps clarify anything for you or not, but.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Uh, it gives me, uh, a little bit of faith. I realize it, it's very steep getting up into the property, but. I think it could be, uh, it can be done, so.
Thank you. Uh, did I miss anyone? Any further discussion? The motion on the floor, Counselor Johnson?
I still have great concern with the, the traffic. Uh, I'm assuming, I, I hope so, that every one of us has driven into that area and I find that. In the early short period of time, I was shocked by the number of houses that have gone up in that general area. On Sterling and, uh, Craig Road and that stuff. And this is what gives me my greatest fear in regards to this whole question of the traffic situation. Because the Rudy property is being developed, the Holland Creek trails being developed. Um, so I'm going to be voting against the motion until we have a proper, long-term traffic program study. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or new items to put forward? I'm seeing none. We do have a motion on the floor. I'm going to call the question, all those in favor. And those opposed. Counselor Johnson opposed, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to six point one point two, and this is a recommendation that, to council direct staff to refer town of. Subject to additional matters raised at the public hearing, council proceed with third reading of town of Lady Smith zoning by law twenty fourteen, number eighteen sixty. Amendment by law number thirty-three, twenty twenty-one, number twenty sixty-one and direct staff to refer. Town of Lay Smith zoning by law twenty fourteen, number eighteen sixty, amendment by law number thirty-three, twenty twenty-one, number twenty sixty-one. To the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. to the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure pursuant to section fifty-two of the Transportation Act. So we did the OCP portion. This is the zoning portion. Councillor, moved by councillor Patterson, seconded by councillor Vertanen. Any discussion on this motion that we just didn't have on the first motion? So this is the zoning amendment portion. We just did the OCP amendment portion. I know traditionally we do them at the same motion, but just a new wrinkle in the process. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And opposed, councillor Johnson opposed, motion carries. All right, moving on to item six point two, subject to public hearing number two, this is two oh one and two oh three Dogwood Drive. Just two recommendations again before us and the motion, the recommendation reads subject to additional matters raised at the public hearing, council proceed with third reading of official community plan by law, two thousand three, number fourteen eighty-eight. Amendment by law, number sixty-four, twenty twenty-one, number twenty sixty-two. So this is in regards to the OCP portion. And I'll open it up for discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'd look for a motion or councillor Vertanen, would you like to speak to it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we asking questions? Are we giving our opinions?
Whatever your opinion or your questions are, now is the time.
All right, perfect. Okay. I find these things bittersweet a little bit. I've well, I have a lot, a lot of time for everybody's concerns, but especially guys like Neil, Bert, Russ, who live right on Forward Road and people who live in the general, in the main vicinity. I actually went, I went to both public meetings there and talked to residents. And then actually not long ago, I went and I met with Russ Marlin. And he took me through a walk through the neighborhood and gave me a bit of a, a history of just the people living there. It was a bit of a nostalgic trip for me because I've known to go to a few parties there in my youth. And then of course, all the input that we received from everybody else. So I have a lot of, I do have a lot of time for that because that's, change is hard, right? I mean, human beings were, were hardwired to resist change. And so, and I, I get that. And so I do have time for that. So I'd touch on maybe a couple of, some of the concerns. So I guess more of the, I'll focus on the bitter part before I get to the sweet part. Some of the concerns that I really heard was building height, that maybe this was the wrong neighborhood, effect on property values and stuff. So the building height, I hear what people are saying with the setbacks. I think, I think five stories sounds a lot higher than it actually is, from what we've seen in the previous staff reports and stuff. Other one neighborhood, I, well, you know, I strongly disagree with that. There's about a three or four block radius there where there's three apartment buildings. There's three multifamily units. There's a dentist, there's a barber, there's a future group hub. We have another proposal of a multifamily unit. So if that's not the right neighborhood for multifamily mixed commercial unit, then I don't know what the right neighborhood would be. And the affecting of the property values, you know, we've talked about this many times with, with the projects like this. If somebody can find me a study, I mean, I keep looking and any study that I found that there is no, not only is there no negative impacts on home values, that actually sometimes it actually increases. I did find one study that they looked at where certain businesses and facilities that were put into a neighborhood on how they affected property values. It has stuff like strip clubs, power plants, even shooting ranges made the list. A project like this didn't even make the list as far as affecting negatively affecting property values. So until somebody can send me something like that, I don't actually believe that this does negatively affect. I, I hear people talking about the OCP review and that we should wait. We know it's going to take eighteen months for that. I think that's a long, a long time to wait. I think it was, I heard Marsh, councillor Stevens either talked about it or posted on social media. It's a living, breathing document, right? So I mean, it's, we, we can still move forward. We don't have to wait for the eighteen months for it to be done and not do anything. We also did hear from a previous member of council who felt that maybe the amenity density bonus wasn't enough. I'm willing to trust staff on this one. I don't, I don't have any real knowledge on that. I think staff probably did what they could do. Parking and traffic, of course, these are concerned. We just had a big long discussion on the feral road, but I think that conversation comes up with any type of, any type of development. But you know what? That's, I'd rather focus more on the sweet part. Boy, there's, there's a, this checks off a lot of boxes to use a cliche. Cleans up an eyesore, the environmental cleanup. It adds housing. We just had a housing needs assessment not long ago that how much we need more housing. I think it was actually councillor Mackay, when we were talking about the OCP review, discussed walkable neighborhoods and some of you know, that we like to strive for stuff like that. And I totally agree with that. And how our hills kind of present as a challenge sometimes. Well, here we go with, we can give twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, I think it's twenty-four families. I mean, they can walk downtown and shop in our local businesses without tackling any hills, right? So I mean, this, this is almost giving that kind of walkable neighborhood. You know, go to developers. These aren't guys from the mainland or elsewhere trying to make a quick buck. These are local guys. They went to high school with my parents. My, my mom still talks about how Frankie King was a great family friend and the Crucial Brothers hired him. So for every person that I've heard kind of that, that is against it, I tell you, I, I must hear at least three or four people that are saying, what's the holdup? Let's get this going. This is, should have been done long ago. So I'm just going to say, you know what? Thanks for letting me ramble. No project is perfect. And no project will make a hundred percent of our residents happy. For me on this one, the positives, you know, they really outweigh the negatives. So unless somebody here on council is going to drop a bombshell on me to make me change my mind, I will be supporting this if it comes to motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I lowered your hand councillor Patterson because I had you on the list. You're next. Go ahead. And then, and then councillor Mackay, and then anyone else who would like to, to weigh in on it. Councillor Johnson, go ahead.
Fortunately councillor Vertanen said almost everything that I wanted to say. I'd just like to know where he got his, his new V from because it's, that's new tonight, isn't it? When you're voting? I spent some time over the weekend looking up urban sprawl and stuff. And just, just out of our existing OCP, under pedestrian bicycles, the community plan should consider means of promoting a pedestrian environment. That's one in the existing. Under aging population, given Ladysmith's location, compact forms of urban development will need to be considered to reduce land consumption and associated costs. There we have, growth can be managed effectively by increasing the ratio of multifamily development and making better use of existing service lands such as those around the downtown through infill or mixed-use development, residential over commercial. Superior community design can ensure that higher density residential development and commercial and employment uses are attractive. That's just some excerpts from our existing community plan. But a couple of things I found interesting, and this is a report out of the Ottawa Citizen. In high-density areas, both household and transportation energy use are significantly lower than in suburban or resident or rural areas. Apartment-style housing is typically smaller than single-family homes and shared walls means there is less heat loss. High-rise buildings, okay, this is not a high-rise, are also typically located near public transportation and commercial centers so people can walk, bike, or take the bus to get around. According to the U S E P A agency, someone living in a typical suburban community will use around three times more energy per year than someone living in an apartment-style building near public transportation. Another one from the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development. Building height restrictions provide a considerable barrier to the emergence of a compact city, especially when they are too stringent. Urban containment policies such as urban growth boundaries and green belts may appear to contribute to a more compact development pattern. However, they may backfire by causing, by causing fragmented leapfrog. And then just one other one from the John Rafferty, who's the editor of Earth and Science. Urban sprawl has been correlated with increased energy use, pollution and traffic congestion and a decline in community distinctiveness and cohesiveness. In addition, by increasing the physical environmental footprints of communities, the phenomenon leads to the destruction of wildlife habitat and the fragment, fragmentation of remaining natural areas. So yes, it is a change to what we what we are used to, but growth is going to come to this whole side of the island. It's inevitable. And as one of the speakers did mention that, this is a a long-time Oracle Heritage Neighborhood. Councillor Vertanen mentioned that there is all sorts of new, there's three, four apartment buildings, there's patio homes, there's a, a seniors retirement village. That's all in the last forty years. So times are changing and times are going to continue to change. And if we want to save money as a city, we've got to stop going way the hell and gone. So I'm, I'm in favor of it. I would like to see maybe some earth tone colors on the building, but anything would be better than we got there right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I have the whole slate on my page, so I'm just going to give everybody their order. I have councillors Mackay, Johnson, Stevens and Jacobson. So just in the order that I saw the hands originally. So councillor Mackay.
Thank you. I would just say out of the gate that I concur with everything councillor Vertanen said. And I agree with councillor Patterson as well. And instead of just reiterating it all again, I'll focus on just a couple of things. The first one being my form of research into this was to, on my many, many walks that I've been doing in the last year and a half now, going into other areas, other towns and, and deliberately walking through areas that are kind of under development or redevelopment, reinvigorating and looking at what buildings look like when they're four stories, five stories, six stories and so on. And I was quite taken aback by the effect of, of stepping in the top stories of a building. And it, it, it truly, I saw it myself. When you step in the top floors, they shadow themselves. They don't actually shadow anybody out beyond the building because their own shadows cast within their own footprint. So I think it, it really has the desired effect of taking away that massing that you get from a taller building. High rises, by the way, are seven stories or more. We don't have a high rise and this isn't going to be one. So I, I think it's, I think it's a handsome building. I think it's a well thought out. I, I do appreciate the point that some of our speakers earlier made around the sightline looking left, coming out of Forward Road looking left. This building is pretty close to the property line and I would want to know that that is being taken into consideration that in fact it is recessed and a clear enough view that it is improved, not worse than what's already there. Another question I had was, is there any possibility, is there, is there a sufficient amount of setback from the building? That there could be perhaps some street parking designated to the building that would be on that side of the road? Is that a possibility? I'm having a hard time imagining because I don't know where the building is going to sit physically on the site, but just something to look at. I can appreciate this, a little narrow road, forward road. I don't know if they currently have parking allowed, but it, I'm certain we could create some kind of restrictions on it to make sure that we always make it a safe place. We don't want anyone unable to back out of the driveway. So I appreciate that point. I won't go on any longer. I know we're, we're in for a long meeting here, but I, I, I have given this a great deal of thought over a long period of time, right from the first time we looked at it. And I don't know if anyone remembers, but I voted against it the first time we did it. First time we looked at it because I, I wasn't optimistic that it could be less than a big lump on the corner, but the building renditions that we're looking at now, I think are very handsome and I personally think it is absolutely the right spot for it with regard to walkability, access to the downtown and bringing new rejuvenation and life back into that whole area. If we do the development, the way it's going, the way it looks like it's heading, it's going to be a very, very lovely end of town. I'm done.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson?
Couple of quick, small points. Reference was made to the fact that the other multifamily buildings are three stories high. I do believe that the reason that they were limited three floors high was because of fire trucks and the ability to fight fires. We're now gone beyond that. So if those buildings had been built today, they would be after five stories also. So I don't buy the argument about the fact that three stories. I agree with everything that everybody has said so far. I think it's best suited, the whole works. But I'm not going to be a hypocrite. I'm not going to vote in favor because my concerns about the overall traffic program problems are still prevalent there. So I would like to support the whole project, but we have to know what we're doing with traffic first before we really jump into any major project. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jacobson? Oh, sorry. Councillor, councillor Jacobson, then councillor Stevens. Sorry councillor Stevens, I kicked you to the back of the line. Councillor Jacobson, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. I, I have two questions. Is that, is that okay? First off, one of the things that was mentioned was the water main issues that have happened on that street and the potential of being able to maybe look at replacing those, doing some work at that time. Do we have it in our, I guess, our public works plan to do any long-term changes to that infrastructure? And I don't know. Is Jeff on the call?
Yeah, he'll come on once your, I would think, once your question is complete.
Okay. Do we, do we, do we have, do we have any potent, like, do we have a big project for that area dealing with the water main issues? Or are those all done and dealt with now? And is that slated for the next, like, to coincide with this if it goes forward?
Thank you. I don't see Mr. Goodall coming on the line, but he is in the meeting. So.
I've just sent him a text. He should be on shortly.
Oh, there he is.
There he is.
Hello, sorry.
So the question was about the infrastructure on Forward Road in, in, either in conjunction with this development or otherwise, are there plans to upgrade the water sewer storm infrastructure on Forward Road?
There isn't for the sanitary sewer, the storm, but there is for the water. So for this development, there will be a water main that comes down Forward Road and, and that water main will come across the frontage of the property. And then we will be coming to council with a report to then extend that to the end of Forward Road. So that will replace that old AC water main that we had the failure on about a year ago.
Can I ask really quickly if you can give us a ballpark? Just because I just lived through water main work myself over the winter. What's the timeline for replacing something like that?
So through the chair, I don't, I don't really know because likely what would happen is, is that we would have the developers contractor, we would negotiate and have the developers contractor do that work because it wouldn't make sense. The, the, the town piece is such a small piece. Once the developer does their piece, we would probably just tag it on to their project. So it's all dependent on how the development proceeds.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Jeff. And can I, can I sneak one in, one more in real quick? So I was just thinking about the traffic issues and I don't know, is it been considered that, that you're just a right to only off of Forward Road onto Dogwood on first, like, just so there's no left turn on there? Maybe just to improve the flow of traffic a little bit? So you could turn left onto Forward Road. I'm not sure. I could, I had a hard time sort of seeing where the access would be to the parking. The underground parking and even the street level parking for the, for the building. So I'm just curious, would it be kind of before you come onto Forward Road? Or is it, like, I'm just wondering if you could kind of go in, in one, and like in the back of the building maybe, and then when you're coming out, just go out, do a right-hand only turn. Do a right hand only turn onto Dogwood versus trying to turn left because I can just really see. Traffic really getting bogged, bogged down at that point.
Mr. Goodall, can you respond to that or someone on staff?
Would it maybe be Jake?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the mayor, I'm not, I'm not that familiar with how the.
I think it was more, well, I can explain while I wait for staff to join us. I can explain that the access to the underground parking is at the back of the building on the lower level off of Forward Road. The surface parking is further up Dogwood Drive closer to the adjacent parcel. Well, right next to the adjacent parcel where the old church building is. So those are the accesses now. About the right turn only off of Ford Road on to First Avenue, I think is what you were getting at though, right?
Yeah, that's so. So they'll be able to act, sorry, the people will be able to access off Dogwood. Right into the back of the building for for parking. Like, there's basically going to be two accesses onto this lot, like one on to Forward Road and then one off of Dogwood.
Yeah, but for the two different parking areas, the surface parking is off.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, perfect.
Sorry, we lost our staff member. Oh, there he is.
Sorry, I'm having a little technical difficulty. I'm. I'm just having difficulty hearing the question. The is it where the access will be?
No, I think we figured that out. Would it be possible to have a right turn only from Forward Road onto Dogwood rather than? Being able to turn right or turn left?
That would be a question that would require further study. Any type of traffic configuration change. Usually needs some kind of assessment to see the impact of that because it can affect, it can affect traffic flows. It's certainly possible. It's always possible to have a right, right in, right out or similar scenario, but. I would be reluctant to comment on that without seeing an assessment.
Without a study. Okay, I'm just thinking it might be better for flow just to only be able to go the one way. And plus you would, you would not have to be turning blindly off like off that corner, turning left onto Dogwood. You'd be. There's the corner right before that.
Through the chair, it's certainly possible. The only caveat to that is that sometimes it directs traffic elsewhere so that people can make the turn. You think an extreme scenario is getting to the Horseshoe Bay Ferry Terminal from the Cedar Sky Corridor. You have to drive halfway north Vancouver and come around. So. It's not about what would happen in this case, but it is. So that's the type of thing that would have to have to be assessed.
Yeah, and I.
Okay, thank you.
Just to be clear, that would be a development permit stage that could be contemplated. That wouldn't be part of the rezoning unless it was a covenanted condition on the rezoning, but. I think the reason that might not have been contemplated was that the traffic study with the additional volumes at the Ford Road intersection. I'm not contemplating the concerns around the left turn. Safety was more about the wait times at the Ford Road stop sign, right? And they said fourteen seconds or something at peak times. As worst case scenario, eleven to fourteen seconds. So they probably didn't contemplate making it right turn only, but. Definitely something we can, we can put for consideration in the future. Any further questions, Counselor Jacobson?
No, that's great. Thank you very much.
Counselor Stevens.
Okay, I actually, it's maybe good. I went last because I have a couple of questions before I make my comments. So. Along the the line of Council, Counselor Jacobson. One of my sticking points, it was in October when we talked about this and again in early March was, and I've talked to staff subsequently. Is the frontage at the development permit stage, that's where we can get into more of the nitty gritty of how the frontage is developed. Is that correct?
Well, that's where we'll get more clarity, but the development permit process is based on the legislative requirements in the. Approved development permit area that applies to the property. So not sure we can contemplate. Additional items that aren't specified within the development permit area unless the developer volunteers that.
That's okay, but I I think I think what I've I've held. Close to my heart is that the the frontage in some senses has been represented, but. Based on CPAC recommendations around removing the grass and such things that it's a bit of a blank slate. And you know what I'm talking about. It's an active transportation corridor on the on the two thousand and nine bicycle plan. And I think it's it's active transportation is the new word for. For bicycles because it's everything that rolls. So I really would like to see at the DP stage us to get creative on that. I've made that point three times. I'll stop making it when I either lose a vote or or it's all said and done. Another question related to. The DP, one of the written submissions made the point that if because we're not doing the zoning and the and the DP concurrently, that. We run a risk of having drawings that we, you know, that that comply out of the zone, but might not possibly down the road. I'm going on the assumption that to develop this suite of drawings is not a cheap proposition and that that's a fairly good insurance policy. Is that a fair premise to go on?
Put that through to staff, but I always recognize that land zoning uses OCP amendment survive past owners. And if they sold to another proponent, they may decide to do something different within the same zoning guidelines, but I'll put that to Mr. Bello Bava.
Through the chair, ultimately, it's up to the owner to determine the level of risk they want to take in the design process. The zoning, if adopted by council, will stand. So if some condition comes along later that requires them to change the design, they'll either. Need to change the design or request an amendment to the zoning to accommodate what they propose.
Okay, go ahead, follow up.
Okay, that's that would be my questions. I'll make my comments and 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 go from there. So. I won't repeat, but I'll touch on a lot of the things that have been said and I've got probably too many notes and and not enough time, but. Certainly, yeah, I mean, this in general developments like this, they they check a lot of boxes in terms of best practices in in planning, walkability, greenhouse gases. Economic development in terms of of the downtown and it and the relative location. The aesthetics of the building, I made the comment in on March second that. That this wasn't at all my style of building, but it's a good looking building. And and I think that's. Not a backhanded compliment. It's a genuine compliment. It's not. It's not the style of things, but. If you know where my house is and what it looks like, who am I to comment? But it's on on aesthetics, but I think it is by and large a good. A really good looking building. The quality of of finishes have been upped from the first incarnation from last October. And I think that's a, that's a good thing and does make the economic, a part of the economic argument that the proponents are trying to make. I better cross off here so I don't repeat myself. In terms of the the amenity contribution. It was, it was pointed out that that's basically the number we have in front of us is assessment. There's a lot more to come. You know, it's, it's part of the 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 public record that with all the testing that was done in the early two thousands on this. The subsequent letters from the town asking the ministry to to interact. Nothing really came of it, except a lot of bad news and and not a lot of results. Now we're in a situation where. The remediation is wholly in the hands of the province and the standard that it's done to. And and that's going to cost money, far more than than certainly just the assessment and it can't be in the. There can be no corners cut on it. It's out of the municipality's hands and I take comfort in that. So. I want to get to the OCP point. It's been touched on by Counselor Britann and I believe the mayor and a few others. You know, we are eighteen months away from it being completed. It's, it would be a convenient argument to make. If our OCP was, you know, it's ancient, but it's not carved in stone tablets. It's been amended sixty one times since two thousand and three. The zoning bylaw that goes along with it has been thirty one times since. Twenty fifteen. These are living documents. They get changed all the time and the and the amendments that have been made to the OCP are not small ones. In fact. One that's sort of a parallel to this one is three fourteen Buller. The LRCA's coming housing project that'll that'll start soon, I believe. Exact same density, hundred and eighty units per per hectare, fourteen and a half meters tall. At terms of a footprint, far more imposing and it's going to work for all the same reasons in terms of of density and and all the good things. That come with that. And yes, the bad parts too, but by but on balance, I think. We're not going radically away from things that have been done in the OCP over the years in on on many fronts. There are concrete examples in there. To the issue of property values, Counselor Britann. I had occasion because of a related item to to read, reacquaint myself with the best. Study that I think I can find that's closest to home, twenty eighteen B C housing study. Talking about affordable housing, which people would, you know, I think even more be more inclined to say, oh, that's going to negatively affect. My housing, housing prices. Thirteen communities, they looked at developments much like this one in terms, you know, two, three, four story and and plus developments. Eleven of them, the the prices went up in the surrounding neighborhoods, two of them, it stayed the same. And and there was so. The and and in those two communities, the prices sort of were stagnant anyway. So. I can send folks the link if they're so inclined for that. So I want to touch on an issue that maybe hasn't been touched and I hope I have the street cred to talk about affordable housing. In a way, I see this as affordable housing. These, there has been some public discussion around. And quite disparaging of about the potential snooty residents that are going to move into here. These are the lion's share of these, these units are seven to eight hundred square feet. They're not enormous. The market won't bear a million dollars for something like. A suite like that, perhaps the obviously the top floor is going to go for for more, but in general, these I would envision being in a price range. Of about what a tear down slash fixer upper would cost. If you're an older couple looking to downsize or a new couple looking to get into the market. This is an ideal price point. Ironically, despite maybe popular opinion, this is affordable housing in its own way. It's not affordable housing like at three fourteen Buller, but it's affordable housing for the missing middle. Parking and height, you know, we we kicked around in October, the notion of a longer. Flatter building that would be, and we all, I think, came to the conclusion. Maybe I'm putting words in and and counselor Mackay's mouth, but I think we came to the conclusion that. The massing of a slightly shorter building, and it would only be slightly in relative terms, would be far more detrimental to the streetscape. And and surrounding neighborhood. Tall and skinny is the the other alternative. And the height is directly related to the cost of remediating. I know that the that this was not an expensive lot to buy. But if you have read the backstory on the environmental mess that is there, it's a hundred and forty pages of bad news. And and money to be spent. The parking issue. Parking, parking, parking. It's always, always a tough. A tough one to manage and to know how in actual real life it will, it will come to bear. As people were speaking. And and about the situation on Forward Road. I I think my reaction was like Counselor Mackay's that we are going to have to sign it and we're going to have to either make allowances or or make rules. To prevent abuses of it. I am not, though, a person who thinks that that everyone has necessarily two cars and to some extent, I think the building. Induces the the demand in the parking. If if you move into a building and know that you're not going to have two, two spots and a place for your RV. Then it's either not going to be your type of building or you're going to downsize. I think the walkability goes to that too. This is a type of building you can move into and get rid of one of your cars. So. I want to go back to the height because I I think there is. You know, when we talked about this in in October, and I would encourage folks who are are here tonight on the meeting to go back and watch that meeting. It was, it was a bit bare knuckle at points and I think, not to put. Words in the architect's mouth, but he did say it was challenging to drop. Digital pictures into real life photos to show how this is going to affect the viewscape of folks. It's not perfect, but I think that it it certainly ends speculation and argument of how a lot of. Of the town will be affected in terms of of the view of this. I don't know where the threshold for me is. I sense that I'll be able to see part of this building from my place. I'm the. I think about five hundred and fifty meters away from it. I don't know where the threshold is that where we say. You know, you're three hundred meters, you have more of a say, you're two hundred meters, you have a lot of say, you're five hundred meters, you don't have as much say. I don't know if we can, we can necessarily do that. I think the thing that I'm I'm proud of is that this was one of the first instances where we insisted. That viewscape be taken into account and actually got concrete examples. Using technology to find out what the the result would be. So those are my general, general comments. On balance, I I'm not blind to the. I don't want to say the warts, but I'll say the warts of what comes with this, this development in its particular location. But in general terms, on balance, I find far more positives to it. I could go on and on. I've already gone on and on and I'm I'm happy to go on and on, but at this point I'll leave it for someone else. Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't spoken yet, so I'll just ask a couple of questions and make a couple of comments based on on some of the feedback that we received during the public hearing. So a question to staff, if you can recall, hopefully, the mix proposed for one and two bedroom units. So it's predominantly one bedroom units, I understood, but some two bedroom units. Do you have the potential or their planned intent on what those numbers are?
Through the chair, I do have those numbers. I actually just looked at them today and I have them right here. Eighteen one bedroom units and six two bedroom units.
Okay, so I just to for clarity, under our guidelines, then eighteen single family. Or single bedroom units would be eighteen parking spots, six under our present guidelines would be twelve. So it'd be a total requirement for parking on site of thirty. And how many parking spots are proposed?
It would be thirty spots plus an additional five for visitor parking. And then as well, the commercial unit could warrant one to two spaces. Additionally, if it was a residential unit. One to two spaces, depending on the number of bedrooms.
Okay, thank you. So just to get an understanding of the gravity of the sort of proposed variance essentially on to the other policies. But you, did you have something else to add?
Mm hmm. Yeah, you asked how many were proposed and twenty nine spaces are proposed.
So thirty five would be kind of our standard requirement, but we're, or sorry, thirty.
Thirty seven, thirty six, thirty seven.
Okay, so we do have a gap there and it's recognized in all the reports that have come to council, but I do want to reflect on the comments that were shared previously. Around some of the housing choice things that happen. If you only have one parking space. Probably not the apartment for you if you've got two vehicles and then RV. I did understand that there was some intent on part of the owner to talk about bicycle storage and things like that to help encourage active lifestyle. And as well as I believe that one of the letters remarked that no EV chargers, but I feel like I heard from the proponent. That there was contemplated to have plugins at the parking spots. Does anybody have that? I see other members of council putting their thumbs up, so I think we heard that, but I just want to be understanding the intent. Does anybody on staff know?
I I can't remember off the top of my head. I believe that information. Maybe in a report, it's possible that the applicant spoke to it at a previous meeting.
Yeah, and I believe that was what I had heard, that it wasn't something they put in it because they just assumed it, but again. Just something that's worth remarking on that I would think the expectation now, and maybe we should add this to our development permit area guidelines. Every parking space should have a have a fifty amp, two forty volt plug attached to the meter for the unit which it serves, but. That's a conversation for another day. So just a couple of comments based on the feedback. The affordable housing thing that was kind of coming up external to the meeting versus what's proposed. But as Counselor Stevens said, you talk about the continuum of housing. There's this conversation on the missing middle. Everybody seems to be focused on either end. Of this and not that sort of middle. I don't believe there's a housing. Developments in the community that sufficiently address the the need that something like this would do, but. Also, the comments on towers and things like that, this would be considered low residential, low density residential. By any planning thing. By any planning uh, thing, I I get that five stories is tall for Lady Smith, but um, that's not. A tower by any stretch of the imagination, and the fact is, as Counselor Stevens pointed out, when we contemplated a. Three or four story blob, so to speak, with frontage that was basically over, over the whole site. Versus a step back fourth and fifth story. The massing impacts, the streetscape impacts, from a planning perspective, the shadow impacts are all more. Typically more uh, extreme with these large block buildings that take a long time if a shadow casts on your property. To pass by um, in the, in the depths of winter. So when we're looking at mitigating um, shadows. Going from five to three or even to four, but in a big mass. Often like is shown, doesn't actually address the issue because the top floor on a step back like that, those shadows are typically cast. Generally more, more on the building itself than on the surrounding properties, and if it is on the surrounding properties. It passes by. Just some things, uh, comments around the the egress, always the conversation around Forward Road is the the in and out of Forward Road. Traffic uh, study spoke to it. I spoke to it at a previous meeting that I didn't think that the initial traffic study addressed it quite appropriately. There was some additions and some further contemplation in the, in the final report that some seemed to satisfy some of that conversation, but. I think it's important that we look at and speak with the proponent if this goes forward about that front. Area to make sure that it's as as good a view um, down the, I guess, heading west, southwest. Off of this, uh, off of Forward Road as possible. And there's no parking. Somebody said, well, what if cars parked there? From what I've seen on the design, there's no anticipated car park right in front adjacent to Forward Road of the building. Um, and there's no parking within ten meters of the stop sign typically, so it won't be cars parked. On Forward Road up in that area. The traffic studies were in the previous package. Those are available um, at both previous council meetings if folks want to review them. I get the density conversation that was well explained in the previous staff reports. Um, yeah, it's a, it's a big deal, but as Counselor Stevens said. Um, there are precedents there, which leads me to the next comment. There is no such thing as precedence in rezoning. I feel like I have to say this every time. Um, every rezoning application is adjudicated in its own merits. What you can do on one property doesn't mean that you're required to do it on the next property directly adjacent to that property. Um, I get this thought process of of uh, creating a new sort of height that we haven't seen before, but. There's nothing precedent setting in terms of the local government act and your requirement to approve projects. Yeah, so uh, comments around the O C P concerned about applications for rezoning. We don't solicit, I've said this already, we don't solicit rezoning applications, those come to council, those are property owners' rights. If they want to come into development services and put forward an application. Council can deny it, but we, they have rights to bring forward their their proposals. I think at a time when uh, there is extreme demand, people talk about escalating home values and unaffordability in Lady Smith. To cut off development for eighteen to twenty four months while you complete an O C P would create uh. Scarcity in the market in Lady Smith that would only further exacerbate the rapid upswing in property values and make things less affordable for people. So I don't really find the logic in saying, oh, we're doing an O C P amendment, so nobody can apply for rezoning or no C P amendment. That's our jobs. Um, the biggest responsibility of any council or regional board is land use applications, and if there wasn't. Uh, i- if if the O C P and the zoning amendment or zoning bylaw were meant to be followed by the letter, there would be no. Functions such as development services, well, in this sense, where people can upzone or downzone their properties. We talked about property values, impacts, disruption of quality of life, absolutely, just like we heard on the previous proposal when trucks come by and things like that. Definitely during construction, there's a a negative impact on va- on uh, local. Quality of life, but as were when those homes were built in the past and. You know, the, you could argue that a derelict building uh, fronting the Dalby site today and the contamination. Is a a bigger negative towards quality of life than a temporary construction. Uh, and the impacts of the of the building in the long run. Comments around the density bonus based on contamination. Just to be clear, onsite and offsite remediation is required to be completed to the standards that are required for a release before the development proceeds. Right? So they can't just go in there and develop this project and just walk away from the remediation requirements. Seem to be some concern that they were only looking at analysis of the the contamination and not going to remediate. My understanding, and this would be kind of posed as a statement through to staff as a question. Is that they wouldn't be able to develop until they get a clean certificate from the Ministry of Environment to do the construction. Is that true?
That's my understanding of it.
And that the 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 numbers that were quoted uh, in the feedback and in previous staff reports. Uh, indeed were remarked for what they were around hundred and sixty something thousand dollars. For what's contemplated in that initial report, any further remediation costs will still be borne by the developer. The reason that we don't talk about the onsite remediation costs is those aren't counted counted as a benefit to the community. Those are within their property. I think the offsite contamination remediation does have some uh, validity as a discussion around uh, as a community amenity. Combined with the upgrades to the crosswalk. Yeah, I think I've covered most of the stuff, uh, you know, I I've spent more time considering this. Rezoning probably because it's seems like it's been on the docket for over a year, but um. You know, neighborhood information meetings July ago. A lot of back and forth, um, initially a six story building proposed that would have been more sort of less design sensitive. More mass, higher stories. When that was changed based on community feedback to something that was more attractive, more respectful of community character. More mitigating shadowing issues, um, the cost went up and the density went down, so admittedly. You know, it's not an affordable seniors rental anymore. However, it stands to reason or note that you can't legally. Force a building to be seniors rental, but it could have been, you know, we did look at the option of rental covenants and it just wasn't. Wasn't something that the proponent felt they could afford to do. I just, in general, want to say that the both the letters and the uh, the feedback we received at the public hearing. A lot of it had a lot of, there's a lot of kernels of wisdom in there, and I think that I say that in recognizing that. Having gone through this process and multiple meetings on this topic, read all the reports that. A lot of this was contemplated and considered as part of the application process, and the proponent and staff brought forward what they feel. Is the best solution to address those concerns, but like everything as Counselor Stevens said. I mean, you're not going to get perfect, and if we we seek perfect, if we swing for the fences every time, you're going to strike out more often than you're going to get on base. And I think that sometimes we have to look at things on balance and and make those uh, difficult decisions that come to council as the. As a property owner makes a a proposal, um, but on balance, I I think that. Most of the concerns that even on things like height, um, you know, a couple of comments where I'd be happy with four. But I would argue that five, the way it's designed would be less impactful than four of a large blob. Generally, I'm I'm quite. Pleased with the work that the proponent has done over a long period of time to get to the point where it was available to go to the public. And you know, there's, we'll, we'll see what the outcomes are, but I'm I'm happy to support the uh, the project moving forward. Counselor Johnson, I think you were on a speaker's list, but I hadn't spoken yet, so over to you.
First of all, I want to thank everybody who submitted uh, statements either verbally on the meeting tonight. Or by email. As you can see, council is taking it extremely seriously. The members of council have spent a lot of time researching, thinking. To try and come up with the best possible solution for the community. I personally am a hundred percent in favor of the project, but I'm still going to vote negative because it'd be hypocritical of me. To turn down one development because my concerns are with traffic and not the other. But overall, I'm a hundred percent behind the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vertanen.
Can I just move staff's recommendation?
So that recommendation for uh, six point two point one is that subject to additional matters raised at the public hearing. Counsel proceed with third reading of official community plan by law two thousand and three, number fourteen eighty eight amendment by law number sixty four, twenty twenty one, number twenty sixty two. It's moved by Counselor Vertanen, seconded by. Counselor Patterson, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor? And those opposed, Counselor Johnson opposed, the motion carries. Moving on to six point two point two. Recommendations that subject to additional matters raised at the public hearing council proceed with third reading of Town of Ladies Smith zoning and by law two thousand and fourteen, number eighteen sixty. Amendment by law number thirty four, twenty twenty one, number twenty sixty three, and direct staff to refer Town of Ladies Smith zoning by law two thousand and fourteen. Number eighteen sixty amendment by law number thirty four, twenty twenty one, number twenty sixty three. To the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure pursuant to section fifty two of the Transportation Act. Moved by Counselor Patterson. Seconded by Counselor Mackay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And opposed, Counselor Johnson opposed, the motion carries. And that concludes that section. Uh, we've been at it for another hour and a half. Would anybody like a five minute break? Give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Okay, we'll just take a quick five minute break and then hopefully we can get through the rest of our agenda in a. Reasonable time because I believe our procedures by law only gives us till ten o'clock.
Eleven P M, your worship.
It's been so long since we went that late. Started an hour early, too. Okay, we'll be back in five minutes, nine oh six. And we're back. Oh, this is waiting for Counselor Patterson. I see he's popping in there. I think we're all back. All right, so we'll resume the rest of our meeting. I've got a quick report, uh, number seven mayor's report, and I just wanted to to read a little bit of this out because I received this email. Uh, last week, I believe, and it kind of blew my mind, so we need to give a little props to Taylor. Mackenzie Walters, but I I understand she goes by Taylor. Lays Mateen Taylor McKenzie Walters has been named one of sixteen students to receive the prestigious Terry Fox humanitarian award. For her work promoting equality in the sciences. There were over seven hundred applicants. Valued at up to twenty eight thousand dollars, the reward recognizes young humanitarians have demonstrated courage and determination through academics, athletics and civic life. McKenzie, who goes by Taylor, has worked tirelessly to expand STEM access opportunities or access. Bad access to STEM opportunity, science, technology, engineering and math. Mentors local Lady Smith U speaks widely about diversity in science and technology and the A I ethics committee she. Started helps create transparency in how A I is used. Anybody else who has A I terrors uh, will appreciate that. Uh, Taylor is passionate about helping others and feels overcoming her own difficult life circumstances, giving her the resilience to see every challenge as an opportunity. Uh, she hopes to continue her humanitarian work by designing new ethical technologies at Quest University where she's pursuing her bachelor's. Degree in human computer interaction. So just solid props to her. And uh, so therefore, the recommendation uh, is that the mayor on behalf of council send a letter and of congratulations to Taylor Walters. Who received the prestigious Terry Fox humanitarian award for her work promoting equity in the sciences, and I would move that item. Seconded by Counselor Mackay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Nobody could be opposed to that. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to minutes, the regular council meeting held March sixteenth, twenty twenty one. And if there are no errors or omissions, a motion to adopt those minutes. Moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Patterson, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Uh, minutes of the special meeting held March twenty third, twenty twenty one. Again, no errors or omissions, a motion to adopt those minutes moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Mackay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Uh, moving on to development applications, item nine point one, development variance permit application for a canopy at ten twenty first avenue blooms at the forty ninth. And the recommendation is that council issue development variance permit three zero nine zero dash two zero dash zero eight to vary section. Four point one, six point eight of the signing canopy by law nineteen ninety five, number eleven seventy six. To allow the installation of a canopy on a building where there is more than one projecting sign. At lot one, district lot twenty four, oyster district plan V I P. Eight, five, one, nine, three, also known as ten twenty first avenue and authorized mayor and corporate officer to sign the development variance permit. Three zero nine zero dash two zero dash zero eight. Moved by Counselor Stevens, seconded by Counselor Mackay, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Uh, development variance permit and development permit for a residential development. Development variance permit and development permit for a residential development at. Sorry, I just gotta get more screen here. Nineteen dash two forty-five Oyster Cove Road. For some reason, it won't let me see the rest of it. The recommendation is that council approved development variance permit three zero dash. Three zero nine zero dash two zero dash zero nine. For a strata lot thirty-seven district lot fifty-six oyster district strata plan two thousand and nine, together with an interest in community common property in portion of the wet. To the unit entitlement of the strata lot as shown on form one nineteen dash two forty-five oyster cove road. To vary the front parcel line setback from six meters to five meters. Approve the development pair variants, yeah. Sorry, I'm having some escribe issues here. Approved development permit three zero six zero dash two zero. Dash two four to permit a new single unit dwelling on strata lot thirty-seven district lot fifty-six oyster district strata plan two thousand and nine. Together with an interest in common property in portion to the unit in proportion to the unit entitlement of the strata lot shown on form one and authorize the mayor and corporate officer to sign the development variance permit three zero nine zero dash two zero dash zero nine. And development permit three zero six zero dash two zero dash two four. Moved by councillor Patterson, seconded by councillor Vertanen, any discussion? Councillor Johnson, so for those who are unfamiliar, this is a very common at the oyster base strata. That they come a little bit closer because of their attached garages, councillor Johnson.
The reference here is they have to move back because part of the, they don't know where the property line is because it's built within the sea wall. So the question I actually have. Is initially that C wall was constructed with the concept being being public access from dawn to dusk. And somewhere along the lines that covenant was dropped. But my understanding is that part of that C wall. Is not on oyster coves property, but is on the forshore. And I'm just wondering, what is the status, are we pursuing access to that C wall for the public? Because it doesn't all fall on their property.
I'd have to put that through to staff, but I don't believe so, that issue was raised in the past and there was no legitimate tool at the town's disposal to do that. But I would put that through to staff.
Um. I don't have any information about. Any action that the town has taken in pursuit of that, I can certainly look into it if requested. Um, in terms of the survey, we do look to the land surveyor of B C to provide that information and to confirm that information. And in this case, the variance permit is to vary the front parcel line. Rather than the rear setback.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and councillor Johnson, if you could actually make it relevant to the application that we're considering right now, that'd be great.
Well, it relates to the C wall, which says. Line is, we don't know if it's where it's going to be.
Yeah.
Do you have any background?
I appreciate that you always find something tangentially related to the application in front of us, but this is about the 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 front parcel or sorry, the back front parcel setback. Mister Belo Baba, did you have anything to add to this?
Through the chair, I would just add that when it comes to parcel lines along the ocean. Generally speaking, erosion control or the natural act such as retaining wall. Or the natural action of the ocean causes the property line to move. As a result, so. Basically, the land adjacent to the ocean, whether. The budding a wall or part of the seashore is part of the private property.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Further to councillor Johnson, we've. Approved pretty well, every single one of those units down there. Using this same process and it's never been discussed over the years, the C wall has been discussed and the town has no. No record of a covenant. I'm not really too sure why he has to bring that up because it's got nothing to do with this.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the actual motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed, motion, or is that opposed councillor Patterson?
No, I was asleep.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item nine point three, O C P and zoning amendment for one zero nine four zero west down road. I don't know why this is cutting everything off, but. And country and west down road town and country mobile home park. So. The recommendation is that council direct application. Direct that application number thirty-three sixty dash twenty dash zero six one zero nine four zero west down road proceed for further consideration. Having considered section four seven five, the local government at consultation during O C P development, direct staff to refer. Number three three six zero dash two zero dash zero six to Sminis First Nation, Couch and Valley Regional District School District sixty-eight Island Health. Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure and B C Transit. Move by councillor Patterson, seconded by councillor Stevens, discussion? I just have a question, more of a comment. Yeah, you know what, never mind, I'll wait till it comes back for an official application. But I do, I do have concerns around any further, and this was, I think contemplated in the report. Any further development there without proper sewer connection? I know it's not inexpensive, but they've had a failing septic system for for several years, I know that we did try and work with them, Mister Goodall may be able to speak to that. And the costs are high, but I don't think we can continue supporting further development in this park. That would be for a temporary septic system. Or for further lots with, so I would just say in advance of of considering an application. I don't think we should be supporting further development of the park without a sewer connection in place. Or at least a pretty straightforward plan to get it there. But that would be my only comment on this application, but Mister Goodall. Just just for refreshing our memories. We did cooperate, I believe, with a study on making that connection with the town and country mobile home park, was it just that the cost to do so were exorbitantly expensive or what? What is the challenge?
Yeah, through the chair, the. The getting the sewer line down from west down road, basically. Over to Feral Road is quite expensive because you have to go through that bluff area. So when when we did the calculation of costs, looking at all the different options. It did come out to be the cheapest option, but it was still a significant cost for one land developer to take on, so. It probably isn't feasible at this time.
Okay, well, maybe I'll change my mind when we see a more formal application in front of us. Is there anyone else who wants to weigh in on this at this time? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Not opposed, motion carries, Miss Smith, that was moved in second, was it not? Okay, thank you. Moving on to bylaws, bylaw status sheet, there's nothing there for us, just the attachment that shows just an update on the bylaws. Moving on to correspondence. First item is from the Couch and Housing Association, and this is support for C V R D grant application to the U B C M Strengthen Community Fund. Twenty twenty-one, and the recommendation is that council of the town of Laysmith approves the submission of a regional application by the Couch and Valley Regional District to the U B C M Strengthening Communities Fund for the purpose of assisting member municipalities with improved health and safety of unsheltered homeless people. During our living in in public or private spaces, including. Reduced risk of COVID nineteen or other disease transmission and reducing community concerns about public health. And safety in neighborhoods where unsheltered homeless populations are seeking temporary shelter and further approve. The couch and valid regional district as the primary applicant that will apply for receive and manage the grant funding on the behalf of the town of Lady Smith. Just the basics of this are that all of the municipalities and the regional district through the couch and housing association looked at some gaps in our response to some of the homelessness challenges. Been able to provide services, just a reminder, please meet your microphone when you aren't speaking. The, and they felt that there was, if we did a group application with the list of things that everybody needed that we could. Could possibly have a better shot at securing the grant and addressing those needs throughout the region. So that's the motion, is that a motion councillor Jacobson? Move by, no question, move by councillor Jacobson, seconded by councillor Vertanen's two fingers, that's what it means, second. Anyone who wants to speak to it? Councillor Jacobson and then Patterson.
Actually just had a question, if. If this is successful, are the funds going to be, do we know how they're going to be implemented within Lady Smith, is it going towards the new shelter on first app?
There's. Yeah, so not directly to the new shelter, but there's some gaps in some of the service provisions and it's different in Lady Smith than it is in Duncan and so forth, so they. Kind of put together a list of costs that they were like the missing little things that they needed. So some of it may go to the shelter, some of it may go to sort of other gaps that they're finding in in the service of that population. But it's different for every community, so I don't have the list in front of me right now. But I did see a preliminary list. There was less things because of the small number of people in Lady Smith relative to the core of the C V R D, but I'm just trying to see. For Duncan. For the town of Laysmith has incremental services adds the outreach support, additional outreach support to the existing shelter facilities, the only thing they've named in this letter.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Patterson? I saw your hand up, so you're next.
Um, yeah, basically the same question. Where it says support to the existing shelter facility, is that the Rialto or the proposed island hotel? And then.
The same facility, duck, just so you know, those are considered the same facility because they provide services out of both, so it would be to both.
Okay, and is there, is there a. A timeframe, like is this a six month contract, a two year contract?
A contract, it's funding. It's a grant.
Okay, so it's when the money's gone, it's gone. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, who else's hand did I see, councillor Stevens?
Third time's the charm, it's it's along the same line of 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 reasoning as councillor Patterson and councillor Jacobson. I realize that in 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 real numbers, our situation is is nothing compared to the municipalities short as south of us. But it's all, it's also all relative to, and so when I look at that list, I. Incremental services, it it's a term that I'm not super comfortable with, I'd be a jerk to vote against this, but I would really like to see us get our fair share. On on one, as I say, our our problem isn't large, on the other hand, that makes it much more solvable, so I'd always like to.
Is that the service providers, including our staff, I believe, were asked for what they needed, and that was what was provided to the grant application, so. Unless we want to start figuring out what they may need, when they're asked, and that's the information that they provide, then that's what we assume they need.
Fair enough, I'm just always mindful of getting our share.
Well, to be fair, none of those have funded shelters, right, by B C housing, they're all actually fundraising and finding their own grant money to provide little sheds.
No, and I don't, I don't begrudge Lake Couchin at all for for what they're getting.
Well, because they had nothing until.
Yeah.
About two weeks ago, so.
Exactly, exactly, thank you.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? And opposed, not opposed, motion carries, moving on to correspondence from the city of William Lake. Request for a call for a public inquiry inquiry regarding stronger sentencing for prolific and repeat offenders and the count, the recommendation is that council request the A V I C C. And the U B C M petition the provincial and federal governments to enact legislative and regulatory changes to the criminal justice system to apply stricter penalties. And ensure adequate incarceration of prolific criminals, including use of electronic monitors when released on conditions. Moved by councillor Jacobson, seconded by councillor Patterson, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Councillor Stevens and councillor Stone or Mayor Stone and councillor Vertanen opposed? Motions carries. So I'll sign that letter as council wills. Request from cystic fibrosis Canada to illuminate. City Hall to increase cystic fibrosis awareness and that counts recommendations, the council approved the request from cystic fibrosis Canada to illuminate city hall with blue or teal lights on Saturday, May first, in support of cystic fibrosis awareness. Moved by councillor Vertanen, seconded by councillor Patterson, any discussion? All I would say is maybe staff can keep track of all these requests and start a list that we can just put on a schedule. And we don't have to have requests every year. Oh, councillor Patterson, I should have just called the question because now I started a discussion.
No, no, just just, I noticed the other day. On Sunday, when I went and came back and I went in to pick up my hard copy agenda. That the lights are on during the day. Is, I don't know if that was just an oversight or, and they're L E Ds, so. Not a big deal, but it is a bit of a deal, so if that can be checked out, but I totally love the lights.
Awesome, thanks, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed, motion carries. I believe, Miss Smith, that takes us down to question period.
Your worship, there's no questions on the info line. I'm not sure if anybody in the audio, we have one, one question. Carol McLaurin in our audience, Carol, just unmute yourself when you're in.
It's Brian McLaurin. Husband of Carol.
Hi, Brian.
Put in a submission regarding the development on Farrell. And. In reading through the many documents. The one of the rationales for not having access to not having main access to Farrell for all of the development. Was because of the. The slope of the land of the terrain. And yet the bill, the, I recall at the start of the meeting, the developer said that all construction traffic would be on to Farrell. My question is, if if that's the case, then they would have to build a road sufficient to withstand all of the truck traffic. Could that road then not be turned into a permanent access?
No.
While maintaining the permanent access to through Sanderson, so that you would have two accesses.
Yeah.
That development.
Yeah, in the reports, it talks about the slope of that access and that it would be sufficient for in and out construction traffic, but it would be. Either too narrow or too steep to be considered a town road under our town engineering standards. So they may be, they may be able to utilize it during construction. And as an emergency exit up to the top portion of the property, but it wouldn't be suitable based on our town engineering standards based on grade. And I think that's probably why the neighboring parcel is a strata. That cut and fill there as well as the slope isn't probably something the town would want to take on from like a snow clearing perspective and stuff, so. Our director could maybe provide more information, but my understanding was it was too steep. And or narrow to live up to the town's standards as a permanent road.
Okay, one other comment on the Dogwood development. There was comments about the safety or lack of for the crosswalk. On Dogwood. And my suggestion would be the town should find some funding to put. User controlled warning lights that would flash. And you would have to put one around the corner. On Dogwood as well as right at the the crosswalk.
Yeah, and that is contemplated as part of the community amenity contribution, there is a line item in there addition to the. To put a lighted signal at the existing crosswalk, but that's a good point, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of information.
Yeah, absolutely. Two very big applications with more time and pages than I've ever seen on any previous, so thank you for that. Any further questions?
No, your worship.
Okay, well, I, we could hang out here for a while longer, we could get a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Jacobson, seconded by councillor Mackay, all those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed, we are adjourned, thank you all and have a good night.